Congratulations.
Counselor Paul?
Present.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Milburn?
Present.
Counselor Edwards is absent.
Consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, May 18, 2024. Emergency meeting, Council Milburn abstains, absent. May 21, 2024, special meeting. May 21, 2024, executive session. May 28, 2024, oh boy, regular meeting. May 28, executive session. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from boards, commissions and committees. Historic Preservation Advisory Board, one. Planning Board, two. Litter Control Committee, one. Historical Cemetery Commission, one. Zoning Revision Committee, four. Harbor Commission, two. Zoning Board of Review, five. Acknowledged receipts and reports, Town Administrator Department Monthly Report, May 2024. Town Administrator Police and Fire Department Overtime Reports, May 2024. Treasurer Charrette, May 2024 Budget and Revenue Reports. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence. Letter from Lou Cabral regarding notice to amend zoning district maps and zoning ordinance. Letter from Jessica Welch regarding upcoming budget vote relating to schools. Letter from Celeste Ferendo regarding Fogland fishing restrictions. Letter from Susan Anderson regarding proposed amendments to open space storage. And letter from Michael Bucko regarding new fishing regulations. Would any of the council like to take anything off the consent agenda for review? I tend to say in a motion for approve the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda?
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Public comments. So, if you're here for the zoning, everyone will be allowed to talk during the public meeting. So if you signed up for that, we will let you talk during the public meeting. Eljit Cormier, does that, I don't know where you are, but you just wrote water. Does that have to do with the zoning regulations?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll allow you to talk during that. And Ron Marsh, scheduling? Would you?
Ron Marsh, 484 Rodway, Tiverton. Concerning those Tiverton citizens who have come to express their concerns about the new zoning amendments, I would like to request that the town council allow those people to express those concerns at the very beginning of the public hearing rather than at the end. Tonight's agenda is very long. If these folks have to wait till the end, many of them will leave without having been able to tell you their thoughts. This is a public hearing, and Tiverton citizens expect to be able to speak and be heard on these critical issues.
Thank you. There'll be a presentation from the planning board before the public hearing, and I think it might answer a lot of your questions, or at least maybe bring up more questions. So, it does appear long, but believe it or not, I think we're going to get through most of this very quickly until we get to the zoning amendments. Appointments and resignations, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, five-member board, three-year terms, two vacancies, term ending 10/15/2026 or 10/15/2024. Deborah Bottomley, 279 Main Road, requests appointment. Is Deborah here? You can come to the microphone. What? Hi, Deborah.
Hi.
Just tell us a little bit about you and why you'd like to be on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board.
Sure, there's three primary reasons. I actually love Tiverton. I've been boating out of Tiverton for over 30 years and have been a full-time resident for the last 10 years. Wanted the opportunity to get involved with the town in some way. My property, Ellen 2794 Main Road, is actually the David Durfee House. It goes back to 1768. My husband and I had a dream of restoring this old farm, and we've invested a lot of sweat equity and money into keeping it up to date and preserving and celebrating the history of the property. And so I would love to get involved in an opportunity to extend that to other historic properties in Tiverton, which I think are potentially at risk and should be celebrated. So making people aware, understanding our history, understanding the opportunities to continue to support and preserve those properties is something I have a passion for. And so I thought that would be a good opportunity to get my feet wet with the town.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Sure.
Go ahead, go.
How long have we had vacancies on this?
Wait some time.
Yeah, okay.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Deb?
I just think that it's delightful. Your home is from 1768, and you understand the importance of historical preservation in our town. And that is what that board works for. So I think you'd be a great addition to that board.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? There's one. Yep, there's one appointment. There's two openings and only one person, so I think that I could entertain a motion.
I will move that we waive our policy of waiting till the next meeting, given the long-term vacancy on this board, and appoint Deborah J. Bottomley of 2794 Main Road, Tiverton, to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board for a term ending 10/15/2026.
Mike, does it have to be two motions to waive? No, you could do it, okay. Do you have a second? Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you for your consideration.
Semi-quintcentennial commission, a nine-member board, one vacancy, term ending 12/31/2026. Robert Taylor, 1570 Main Road, requests appointment. Is Robert here? There he is.
Hello.
Hi, Robert.
As you people up front know, that I've served on the bicentennial commission, and I enjoyed it. I think I could be a help for the 250th in a limited portion, if you will. I have no hang-ups at all of being kind of an alternative. And that's about all I'm going to say at this point in time. If you have questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive our policy and appoint Robert Taylor of 1570 Main Road to the semi-quintcentennial commission with a term ending 12/31/2026.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
And just if I may note, as the council member on that, I will be sending something out to set up the first meeting.
I think.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You too. I want to do this one. Go ahead.
An unusually large, it's in a very hot auditorium. As one member of the public said, I don't want to have, I don't want to have people sitting here waiting and waiting and waiting to discuss all these things. To that end, I would like to move or continue 7A, B, C, and D to our next meeting. Continue the public hearing for 7G to our next meeting. Move up 7E, F, H, I, J, K, and L. And the reason I would move 7A, B, C, and D, these are all special events that are a month or more in the future.
Do I have a second? I have a problem with this because we have people here that are planning weddings for August 3, and I think we should be able to tell them. Plus, we advertised it, and they did show up. This usually goes pretty quick. So I don't have a second to Jay's motion. Amy Peckham, considerations sound variance for wedding at 20 Fogland Road on Saturday, August 3, 2024, from 7:00 to 10:00, and requests approval of special event permit. Is Amy here?
I'm not Amy, but I'm here on her behalf.
That's okay.
I'm the event planner. So it's just a wedding at 20 Fogland.
And the parking, I see it.
There's a parking plan.
Yeah. Any questions?
Well, that'd be...
About, about how many people?
150.
150?
Well, the RSVP's on in yet. That's probably be about more like 100.
And there's parking available for all of that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's a big farm.
Are you having a tent?
Uh huh, it's already been approved.
Okay. Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I move that we approve the sound variance. I move approval of the sound variance for Amy Peckham for the wedding at 20 Fogland Road on Saturday, August 3, 2024, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., subject to meeting all legal requirements and approval of the special event permit.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Candace Texta, Cultural Survival, requests approval of sound variance for Cultural Survival Arts Bazaar Event at 3852 Main Road on July 27, 2024, and July 28, 2024, from 10:00 to 6:00, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Hi.
Hello.
Did you run this last time?
No, I did not.
Okay. Where, where will parking be?
Parking will be at 3964 Main Road, Teresa Holland's property.
Yep. Have you talked to the police about whether or not you need a detail? Because it usually gets where you do.
Yes, I have submitted a form. There was a little bit of confusion because things got transferred over, but I stopped by the actual police department. And I, I sent emails, but I will follow up just to ensure that they receive my application. We are willing to pay for the...
Yeah, because the events we have down here, we, we have to have one because the traffic gets a little too much.
Certainly.
Any questions?
Move approval of the Candace Texta's request for a sound variance for the Cultural Survival Arts Bazaar Event at 3852 Main Road on July 27, 2024, and July 28, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. both days, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Evelyn's Nana Quakka Drive-In, Jane Biddo, considerations sound variance for singing out against hunger, 2335 Main Road, on Friday, August 23, and Thursday, September 5. Main date will be September 12. Room 49 requests approval of special event permit. Jane?
Yes. Figured I'd come over.
So, same as you've had for all these years?
Yes, 22 years, singing out against hunger. Couple of different locations. We've raised 200, over $270,000. And, yeah, we're really excited to do two events this year.
Last year, you had one night, right?
Yes, we had more than three events, went down to two, went down to one, and now we're back up to two.
And there'll be details.
Yes, definitely. Yes.
Any question for Jane? Entertain a motion?
Move we approve the sound variance request for singing out against hunger, hunger at Evelyn's Nana Quakka Drive-In, 2335 Main Road, on Friday, August 23, 2024, and Thursday, September 5, 2024, with a rain date of September 12, 2024, on each day from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And approval of a special event permit, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane.
Coastal Roasters, Lisa Machado, consideration of sound variance for singing out against hunger, 1791 Main Road, on Monday, August 19, 2024, from 9:00 to 1:00. Request approval of special event permit.
Ooh, yeah, that's supposed to be Sunday, August 18. Does it say Monday?
It says Monday, so it's Sunday, August 19.
Well, it's Sunday, August 18.
Oh.
That's weird. I don't know how that happened.
Yeah, I don't have the applic... It says 8:19.
It says 8:19, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
All right, so that must have been...
It's okay.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask you. Yeah, we're going to have to table this. Sorry, Lisa. Yeah, we need a new application with the correct date, and then we have to advertise it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, yep.
Motion to table item... 7D, 7D, until our next meeting.
No, it's not going to be.
No, that won't be enough time.
Table indefinitely.
Table...
Indefinitely.
Because it's going to advertise it for how many days?
14.
14. Okay, so it'll be a while. Do I have a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Finance, Section 2-91, Restricted Appropriation Accounts. This proposed ordinance will amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Finance, 2-91, Restricted Appropriation Accounts, which proposes to add a new restricted appropriation account to snow removal. This was talked during budget reports. Because of mild winters, sometimes we don't use all the snow removal account, and it just goes back into general fund, and we re-tax people to put it back there. So instead, we will have, have this as an account. If we don't use it, it just stays there. And then we will decide what's the appropriate allocation, looking at what's in there. Did I describe it correctly? Any comments?
Just that when we get to a certain point, then we would no longer put money in...
Any money in it.
Anymore, to fund it anymore, so we wouldn't be taxing people for it.
We do this with the paving account. We do this with sand.
Sand, salt, and gravel.
Sand, salt, and gravel. You have a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we didn't help it. We didn't.
He didn't open his mouth.
No.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone have a comment about this item? Anyone have a comment? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5.
I'm here.
Sorry, Finance, Section 2, 91, Restricted Appropriation Account. Need to read the whole thing?
Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Finance, Section 2, 107, Casino Gaming Revenue. The proposed new amendment will, would propose, proposed ordinance will amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Finance, 2-107, Casino Gaming Revenue under Section 2, 107B, which proposes to record $200,000 to the restricted paving account instead of the unassigned general. Do I have any comments from the council?
Well, the reason for this was to ensure that we had sufficient funding for paving because paving is obviously a hot topic, and it's very, very costly to do. And we have different funding sources for the paving, but this is to put a $200,000 amount each year into that restricted fund.
I'd like to open the public comment portion. Open the public meeting, come on up.
Hi, Maureen. Good evening. Maureen Morrow, Peaceful Way. I wonder if the town council, this town council, has any idea when the last time paving was fully funded? And I'm going to assume that the director of DPW, whoever that might have been over the years, puts in a request, and it's funded, or partially funded. And the context I'm getting at here is, I'm fully in favor of what you've just made the motion about, but my street is in terrible condition. It's full of cracks, potholes. It hasn't been paved in the 27 years that we've been there. It's been fill-in, fill-in, fill-in. And I've been told by the director that we're not even in the top 50% of roads that need to be paved. So I guess I'm just getting up and speaking tonight because we have crumbling roads everywhere. I'm not trying to present my selfish opinion. My road happens to be disgraceful. But it's just something going forward that I think the town council needs to pay attention to. I'm going to assume that you get requests from the DPW. These are the roads that need to be paved. This is the cost. Let's try to meet at one of these years.
We try to fund it. We do fund it, but the problem is there's a short period of time that this can occur.
Yeah.
And there's only so many roads that can be done.
I understand.
There is a list.
Yeah, I see it. I go on there all the time to see if my road has finally made it.
And I know the DPW director does the best he can to do as many as he possibly can. When he comes to us with a request, we do look at what we have in there, and we supplement it to what he needs.
Okay. No, I'm just telling you, a crumbled, literally 100% crumbled road with potholes, the circle. If, if the neighborhood had children today, which it did when we moved in, they wouldn't even be able to ride their bikes down there. And we're not in the top 50%.
What is the road?
Peaceful Way.
I think I knew that.
Anyway, I just wanted to put that out there and make a public comment about it because...
Sure.
So, thanks so much for listening.
You're welcome.
So prior to my four years on the council, I was on the Budget Committee for six. And prior to that, a certain dollar amount was allotted every budget cycle for paving. It got transferred out for other needs.
Yeah, I remember that.
It always, it went down from whatever it was to a very miniscule amount. And paving is so very costly...
Yes.
That they, they just couldn't get it done. When we started with casino money, we started to try to supplement this restricted fund so that we have more money, so that Rick does prioritize the streets. And I'm not sure where yours is on the, on there, but...
Bottom 50%.
He had told us, he had told us at one time, if they were to pave every street in Tiverton, it would take, did he say 75 years or like some...
Well, I understand that, Deb, but there has to be some kind of triage process.
Right, right.
I'm not sure who's responsible for that, who oversees it, you know, a drive around.
That would be the DPW, correct. And they do put them in order, but then there obviously are some areas that are hotter hit because of issues. But that's why we're trying to restrict some funding into that account so that we can do a little bit more each year, so that we're not waiting 30 years to repave a street.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Anyone else like to comment? Anyone else?
My name is Callie Bries, and I live at 14 Ocean View Avenue. And it's over in the Haskins area neighborhood where the gun shop is that we didn't know anything about. I just want to say that we just had Haskins Avenue, Ocean View Avenue, Terrace Avenue, and Bayview Avenue paved only because we had to have new water lines put in. I've lived here for 44 years. Our road had never been paved. So I understand how you feel, Maureen, because we had a pothole so big down by the gun shop that we had frogs in it. So I do understand, and I think that, I think more money should be allotted to whoever is in charge of paving the roads because it's disgraceful.
That's, that's what this ordinance does, too. So it'll be helpful, it'll help.
More there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening. Brian Britsky, 690 Brayton Road. Looking at the 2024 paving schedule, Brayton Road, Bogomash Road, Fish Road, none of those are even on that. Is that part of the project that, from the solar farm? Is that getting repaved? Because those roads are atrocious.
Those are state roads, I believe.
Brayton Road is not a state road.
No, but, but Fish is. And what was the other one?
Bogomash Road.
Bogomash is a state?
Rick is, Rick?
So what's happening with Brayton, he's asking?
Brayton Road, as part of the solar development project, will be milled and paved from the entrance of the solar farm north to 177, which is Bogomash.
Do you have a timeframe for that, do you know?
He believes it.
They expect to be done this year, but that's under Green Development Corporation's doing that.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Finance, Section 2-107, Casino Gaming Revenue, which would move $200,000 annually from the casino gaming revenue to the restricted paving account instead of the unassigned general fund.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Approval of the, approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A zoning to include cannabis-related businesses uses in light of voter approval of the November 8, 2022 ballot measure under the Rhode Island Cannabis Act. The proposed new ordinance will amend Appendix A zoning, Article 2, definitions to define cannabis, marijuana, and other related businesses related to the cultivation, testing, and retail sale of legal cannabis under the Rhode Island Cannabis Act, Article 5, Section 13A. Cannabis use, uses adds a new use category to the zoning ordinances related to cannabis uses and allows certain defined uses cannabis cultivator, retailer, and tester, including a compassion center, only in an industrial zone as part of a planned development park, either as permitted use by right or through a special use permit, with specific criteria as set forth. as set forth in Article 16, Section 3. And that's kind of self-explanatory, I believe.
Madam Chair, so just, that was good, just to educate the council and the members of the public, as you know, the voters did approve cannabis within the town of Tiverton. The definitions that you just mentioned were all to be added to the zoning code, are all from state law. Currently, under the current zoning, anything cannabis-related is not permitted in any zone. Are we had to amend, are we proposing to amend it to allow those type of businesses only in the industrial zone or as part of a, and as a part of a planned development park in the industrial zone? That's before you tonight. The other thing that you need to decide after the public hearing is whether you do it as a permitted right or by a special use permit. And if it's a special use permit, you need to adopt the criteria that's in the ordinance. Thank you.
Any comments from, go ahead.
So, Michael, this, this, this would include outside of the PDP as written, outside of the professional business park, the industrial park, as written? Yes?
No, if you look at the use table, it's PDP only. So it's a permitted or a special use permit in the PDO, PDP only, which is an industrial zone.
Okay. But any other industrial-zoned areas, it's not permitted if we pass this as is?
Correct, because the PDP is defined as, I think it's 10 contiguous acres, and we don't, it would only be in the industrial park that the PDP could be located.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chairman. So Solicitor Marcelo, is it still true that the state, even though they've created legislation, has not issued any permits yet?
That's true. So we're waiting for the state to issue regulations about the Cannabis Commission? That is, that is true. So this, in order to, in order to get a license, this doesn't automatically say that a marijuana shop is going to be here. They still have to comply with all the state requirements, including be issued a license by the state. So all this is, all this is saying that if they do get a license and they meet the other criteria, they would be allowed in this zone.
Well, so let me continue here. So we don't know that Tiverton will get any of these facilities.
They may not.
They're going to draw it out of a hat, and that'll, that'll be when we know. However...
I don't think the lottery is in place anymore, but that was the old system, but the new system has that application process.
At the June 5 meeting of the zoning board, they gave an approval for a cannabis-related business outside the industrial park.
That's because they granted a use variance and because...
This is going to be a problem, isn't it?
They were in the legal right to do so. They granted a use variance because retail marijuana is listed as a not permitted use in every zone, but that's what a use variance does, to allow you to put a use in a zone that's not permitted. That was the, the zoning board felt that they had met the requirement for a use variance. So, but this is, that's separate from that. This ordinance has nothing to do with that decision of the zoning board. Zoning board always has the right to grant use variances unless the use is specifically prohibited. And we'll get to that when we get to another thing that's on our agenda tonight.
Can I ask another question? Mr. Marcelo, with the state, they're going to be giving out these permissions, would there be more than one per town?
I'm not familiar with the regulations. I don't think they've been promulgated. I think there were, from the last I read, they were considering it per zone, and so there are different towns that were clustered in the zone. So I think Tiverton, Little Compton was considered one zone. So you're allowed, at the one, at one time, you're allowed one license per zone. That may change, but they're still writing the regulation, so we don't know.
So if we've already had a variance for one, and then we were to approve this, that could be possibly two or...
No, it's still up to the license, it's still up to the... This is not a guarantee that, even, even the use variance that was granted does not guarantee that they're going to get the license from the state.
But if they gave us two licenses?
They still have to have a, be located in a particular zone, and I'm not sure that you would be allowed two licenses within the same zone, but those regulations haven't been written yet that I'm aware of. Been a long process at the state level. This does not guarantee that Tiverton will get a marijuana retail shop or a grow shop. This is just allowing it if, if a person gets it. Part of the application process that an applicant must show is that they have approval or the area that they're proposing is properly zoned for that, for that use.
Mike? To my fellow counselors, I also disagree strongly with the decision that was made, although it's within their purview, by the zoning board, given that there was clear knowledge that we were working on this, and this was up this week. At the same time, I would wager that it is highly unlikely that we would have more than one assigned to Tiverton. So it could happen that somebody proposes one in the industrial park, and there's the variance for this other location. They're only going to assign it to one.
Correct. Like to open the public hearing? Anyone have any, any comments? Just as a note, people can come to the microphone during the public hearing. We are going to allow three minutes. And we are timing, I do let you go a tiny bit over if you're almost done, but not much.
Jamie French, I live on Craig Avenue, and I don't understand why we would want a cannabis dispensary or any other cannabis-related items at the industrial park due to the fact that we have Longplex, we have Ranger School, and we have the school, this whole school district's basically right there. Now, it has been mentioned by many people that they would like to see it in the highway commercial zone, the zone that is north of the casino on Stafford Road and the state line. That has been talked about, and it is a popular area, and I think that it should be a by-right decision to put it there because the state of Rhode Island and the taxpayers of Tiverton have voted that this is something that we wish to see, and it produces large tax revenue which we need. If I was God, I would place it at blissful corners and really break in the money, but since that's not an option, I think highway commercials should definitely be considered. I also find it a conflict of interest that we would only put it in the PDP, which happens to be owned by the town of Tiverton. So we would be forcing the owner of this cannabis-related whatever to have to purchase land from us in order to do that. That seems to be a conflict of interest. Don't you think that we only will allow you to have a right to be here if you buy land from us? That doesn't sound exactly on the up and up. Thank you.
Jamie, don't go yet. I have a question for you.
Yes.
So I know that folks who live in the area of highway commercial that you identified up near where the casino is and everything else have expressed serious concerns about it being located up there. So I'm not sure who all the people you're talking about are, but let's say we decided to put this in pedestrian-friendly on Main Road near your house. Would you like that?
I wouldn't mind. Actually, I would not mind.
The traffic?
I would, I would object to something like a, probably a fast food restaurant or bakery. I love bakeries, but the smell of oil and cooked goods permeating into my house all day long would be annoying, whereas a cannabis shop creates great revenue. People come, they go. They don't littering, loitering, they're in there for any other business. I'd much rather have that than a crematorium. I'd much rather have it than a multi-story apartment complex. I'd much rather have it than a mixed-use commercial residential multi-story building. I see no problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I will have to tell you that up there where the casino is, there's already a marijuana store, a cannabis, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 I know. But what I'm saying is the traffic is already horrendous to come into Stafford Road. So...
Don't yell out, please.
Please don't yell.
If you have something to say, please come up.
So why we picked the industrial park, it's right off of 24. You go right in and right out, and that's why we thought that that was the best place. On Stafford Road, talk about, a lot of people talk about the traffic on Main, but to get into Stafford Road, especially on like a Friday night, is almost impossible. So I don't really know if that would be the best place, but that's why we chose the industrial park, because of how close it is to the highway. You can come in.
Hi, my name's Dave Rickerby. I live at 60 April Lane. Didn't come here to talk about this, but I wanted to ask Counselor Marcelo one question, which is when I looked at the plan that we are talking about later tonight, I thought I saw that all marijuana uses were zeroed out. So how does this interact with that?
This will supersede that. This is a special amendment unrelated to what was on, that might be on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so this will supersede?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to understand that. And then I also wanted to make just one general comment for the council, because everybody's been talking about this, is if it's a retail shop, where my understanding is that one of the biggest needs in the state, and the need that in a rural town like Tiverton is probably premier, is the indoor grow facilities. And those will bring jobs to the state and not, to the area and not traffic. And those are very appropriate for an industrial park. So, and you are right, one of Massachusetts' oldest and first cannabis stores is right next to our casino, and Massachusetts gets all their tax revenue out of there. We're not going to get any, God help somebody who wants to compete with them, but we do need grow facilities in the state for this, and an industrial park is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? Entertain a motion?
We have to decide special use, sir.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion, but I want to get a sense, I'm going to assume unless I hear otherwise, that our council members would prefer it to be done through special use as opposed to permitted by right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adopt. Oh, and just to note that the planning board did review this and agreed with this ordinance proposal.
They give a favorable recommendation on the proposed change.
So I move that we adopt the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Zoning to Include Cannabis-Related Businesses, Uses in Light of Voter Approval of the November 8, 2022 ballot measure under the Rhode Island Cannabis Act, which would limit it to the planned development park area through a special use permit as with the criteria defined in the ordinance.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Approval of the proposed amendments to Tiverton zoning ordinance provisions are opposed to zoning ordinance, Article 16, Special Use Permit, Section 1, applicability to extend for another five months. The period that all uses requiring a special use permit shall be converted to not permitted. This revision will change the period that uses requiring a special use permit shall be converted to nonpermitted from January 1, 2024, to June 30, 2024, to the period of January 1, 2024, to November 30, 2024. Todd?
Good evening. Todd Romano, Planning Board Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor. It's exactly as what you said, Madam President. It's to extend the period that special use, special uses remain not permitted while the planning board, and more particularly the zoning ordinance committee which you appointed, go through each of the uses and identify which should be changed to permitted by right, actually, and narrowing the number of, that would require a special use permit with specific and objective criteria, which has turned out to be a far greater task than anyone could have anticipated.
Any questions from the council?
Comment? So the planning board and the zoning board, the zoning rewrite board spent greater than the last six months working on this. They have looked at 160?
Almost every single use, meeting on Saturdays as well.
Yeah, and it's just, it's a huge, huge task, and they're trying to look at every single scenario, and what if this, and what if that, trying to make sure that we don't end up with businesses trying to come in through loopholes, which we're dealing with now. And so we're trying to close those up, and they're really, it's, it's a, it's an act of very detailed, finite detail, so we're just not there yet. So they've done a tremendous amount of work, but there's still a little more to be done. So that's why this request has come in.
Just to give an example, we just, in the marijuana ordinance that we just passed, there are specific criteria enumerated in this, and I'm not going to read all of them, but it includes things like minimum qualifications, receipt of a license, evidence that they have site control, security plan, odor control, site conditions, location not less than 500 feet away from schools, not less than 2,000 feet away from other cannabis and adjoining communities, lighting, hours of operation, security, parking, signage. That's just a few of the elements that for any special use permit going forward, the state is requiring us to have that level of detail. So I know the zoning review committee has been very busy at working on a lot of things, including that, and so they have a lot, a lot more work to do. This actually protects us, and it will protect people who, if we're able to move things into a permitted use, it will protect that owner.
Any other comments? Like to open the public hearing? Like to open the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Let me see your agenda, because I lost mine, and I'll make the motion for you. Move approval of the extension of the moratorium on issuance of special use permits through November 30 of 2024, with the exception of any special use permits such as the marijuana permit, ordinance that have already been reviewed and approved by this council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Ananimos. Approval of the proposed ordinance to the Tiverton Town Zoning Ordinance Revisions are proposed to Appendix A, Zoning Ordinance, to amend Article 2, Definitions, and Article 4, Section 15, Prohibited Uses. These amendments will add uses to the list of prohibited uses and will add definitions for these prohibited uses. The amendments also redefine campground for a mobile home.
So just as, excuse me, just as an explanation, this is a list, it's two parts, but the listing of prohibited uses is in a separate part of the zoning code, and the, and these are, would not be permitted in any zone whatsoever, and the zoning board wouldn't be able to do, grant a use variance for this. The reason why this becomes important is because state law changed January 2024 and said that if a use was not specifically prohibited in the zoning code, the zoning officer and/or the zoning board, if someone proposed a use that was somewhat like something that was already there, they have the option to petition the zoning board and/or the officer to see if it would fit within a use that's close to it, but not exactly listed. It's almost impossible to list every potential use in a zoning code that might, might come up, like for instance, a hookah bar lounge, that's something that's probably been, was new. When the zoning code was written, there was no such thing as a hookah bar that I'm aware of, but it's become a new use. So the zoning board, if this prohibition wasn't in there, you could maybe say a cigar lounge. If there was a cigar lounge, well, that's kind of like a hookah bar, and they would be able to petition the zoning officer and/or the zoning board to say, well, it's kind of like it, and so it should be allowed in the same zone that a cigar lounge is. So those are just one example that comes to mind. So the list is on there, they add P through double P, B, and then a lot of these have definitions that are listed in the definitional section of the zoning code, so there's no confusion as to what we mean by those. That's why this is important, basically driven by the...
Do you think I should read these?
I think you probably should.
Okay.
Just, just the listings without the definitions, correct. I can, you want me to read them?
No, I can, but that's the part I'm going to read. The definitions being added to Article 2. A brewery, is that what you want me to read?
Starts with a billboard, right?
What?
Starts with a billboard. Billboard?
So there's two, there's...
Not the definition, just the listings.
Oh, you want me to do?
The listing.
You want to read them?
Yeah, sure. So the prohibited uses which begin at P, so this would be new, would be a billboard, a brewery, a campground, distillery, dry cleaning or laundromat that processes on-site, electric vehicle charging station, commercial, golf course or golf club, hookah lounge, bar, manufacturing except as regulated herein, motocross, all-terrain vehicle venue for driving, racing, and/or instruction, motor freight terminal, nuclear power station, pawn shop, payday loan shop. I'm sorry, there's more than I...
No, that's it.
No, there's more. Payday loan shop.
Yeah.
Primary manufacturer or storage of ammonia, beach chlorine, acetylene gas, private beach, production of rubber, glue, or asphalt, pulp mill, self-service car wash, sewage treatment, or solid waste disposal facility, smelter, blast furnace, blooming mill, tent or recreational vehicle camp, transient trailer park, and wind turbine.
Any... Go ahead.
Just to get a couple of things out there. Michael, if I already have approval and I'm operating a nuclear power plant, I can still operate it.
Yes, so if you're currently operating a use that's listed here, you would be grandfathered in, correct?
Okay. We have none, just doing that. And I know some people have said, and I certainly would love to have a brew pub, but we'll hear later as to why that's in there right now, and that's they are major uses of water, and we have a huge water issue, and capacity issue in town. So it doesn't, so the other question is, in approving these tonight, it doesn't mean that it's some future date. We can't resurrect consideration once we have, once we've either decided they should be a permitted use somewhere, or we've decided that we want to have it as a special use and have defined criteria.
Correct. You'd have to amend the ordinance to take it off of the prohibited list after a public hearing and the same process that we've gone through tonight.
So if somebody is doing one of these listed?
Today.
Today, but they have to be permitted to do it. They have to have approval to do it.
Correct. Or they've been grandfathered in already, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Hope you're staying cool with the door open. My name is Blake Hayden. I just filed my paperwork today to run for Town Council in Tiverton.
Blake.
214 Highland Road is where I reside, and I'm the owner of the Hilltop Tree Farm. And since 2020, I've been running four campsites there. So my question for you with this change or this proposed amendment here is, I've had an application in with the building inspector and the town hall that's been pending for over a year, and I can't get an answer on what I'm doing wrong or what policy I'm violating whatsoever, so it's been pending. So what I'd ask that you put in here is if you pass anything, anyone with a pending application, that they would be grandfathered in, because I have been running a great, small, little four campsite campground since COVID hit. Everyone's loved it. They're trying to save money on the hotels in Newport and this and that and the other thing, and I am permitted to be a farm. So with the fact that I've had the application in and it hasn't been approved by anyone, and I can't get an answer, I was just curious if you could grandfather me in as a campground at Hilltop Tree Farm at 174 Highland Road. There's been no complaints of my campground.
Yes, there have. Yes, there have.
There haven't.
Human waste left at the front end.
There's been no human waste whatsoever left anywhere. We have Camp Blue bags that are NASA-approved with a NASA solution, and they go in the maroon bags that we pay $2 for to dispose throughout the, you know, the town trash recycling that we have come every Monday morning. So there's not been any complaints. If there's been one on any kind of waste, I'd love to see it, and if there's anything that I would need to do to get up to speed and compliant with waste, I'd be happy to put portage ons or anything else that are required there. But I have been running this for four years. My permit is still pending, and I would love to get some closure and possibly get grandfathered in.
So you're operating without a permit?
Nope, the permit has been pending.
No, you're operating without a permit.
I've received, I've received letters about that. I've responded. I've filed the permit. I've met with the building inspector on that, and it has been pending for a year and a half, and they cannot tell me one policy that I've been violating as a farm.
I believe he's been cited by the zoning officer, so...
And I responded to that.
Yeah, but then, so the process to file, the citation, I believe, says you're not in compliance with the zoning code, so you wouldn't be allowed to be grandfathered in if you're not in compliance today.
Okay, but I gave my bookings to them, and I said, if you're going to cite me, cite me. They cannot come up with what they're going, they have nothing to cite me on. I'm within all the rules. I have an attorney, a team of attorneys working on it, and there's nothing that I've gotten back that can say, here is what you have violated. Here is the actual citing. I've asked them to provide that to me, and they have not.
I don't want to argue your case before today, but I believe that you have been given notice. I haven't heard anything from your attorneys that I'm aware of. I just asked the Assistant Solicitor if he has heard anything. We have not heard anything, but I believe you've been cited for violation of the zoning code. There's a process to appeal that, and you're going to follow that process, so...
Yeah, I have, and I've been representing myself throughout that process. And again, my permit has been pending for over a year. So I guess the ball's in your court to send me...
No.
Well, you've been cited. I believe you've been cited, sir.
You've been cited, so the balls...
For what, though? Can you tell me for what?
For operating an illegal campground on a residential...
Madam President, this is beyond the purpose.
But I don't want to, that's really...
Okay, I just didn't want you to pass something on campgrounds, and I've been doing it again for four years. I've tried to follow. I've tried to stay in compliance. I've tried to do everything possible, and so just bringing it up before you make a vote on it.
Thank you. We'll be in contact with you if we haven't already.
Appreciate, appreciate everyone's support for Town Council.
Anyone else?
Oh, no, they're just getting up.
I also have, Jamie French on Craig Avenue, I also have questions on why the fun stuff is all prohibited. We can't have camping. We can't have glamping. We can't have RV parking. We can't have a brewery because it takes up too much water, but we can increase densities in artivity that use lots of water and have other permitted uses that have lots of water. And somehow Westport seems to have a brewery without having any issue. And I just don't understand why these, all of these items, we're lagging behind. They're great moneymakers. They're mostly seasonal, and they just bring in a lot of taxation, and I don't know why. We keep saying, no, 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 it's okay for manufacturing, and it's okay for high-density development, but open space, having fun, campgrounds, glamping, RV? Oh, no, that's prohibited. And it just seems there's a real problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Al Cormier.
Hi, Al.
And I live at 348 Souza Road. And the solicitor, my wife sent a picture of the charging station to the clerk today, and I say it's a hazard on Souza Road. It's on the road.
The what, sir?
It's dangerous.
The charging station?
The charge point, charging station.
Yep, I know what you're talking about.
You can go online, look at it. There's no picture of it now, but there's a picture of it before they put it up, when it's a beautiful stone wall and what was there. But what's there now is completely unacceptable. It's dangerous. You want to take urine tests? I mean, you're permitted to go by there.
Have you notified the building office?
I don't think it's my issue.
We are aware of it.
I don't have, I don't have the ordinances the town has. It's a state road, and as far as VDI goes, they don't have, they have the zoning board in complete control. It's blacktopped. The lighting is offensive. All hours of the night, the cars, it's crazy. We have a 24-hour-a-day business across the street from my house. I go out to get the mail. They have to drive in. And when they back out, unless your car has, you know, the new technology, I mean, nowadays, the car drives itself, but I understand that there's still people driving around that don't have self-driving cars. But I just want to say it's dangerous, and the town ought to do something to stop this nonsense. It's a well-traveled road. The trucks with the new construction, that's going to go on. I mean, 600 houses within a mile of my house. Please, there's no, there's no way that this charges station should remain there. We have a parking ride. If VDI has to have it, put it in the parking ride. It's a good place for it. Shop a shop, maybe, you know? I don't know, but not in front of my house, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll... Oh, come on, Freddie.
Fred Souza, 51 King Road. In regards to Councilman's Burke telling us that there's a major problem with water. If there was a major problem with water in this town, I have a couple of questions. I see five to six, maybe seven pool trucks daily, all in pool water this time of year. I haven't seen any attempt at conservation. I haven't seen anyone say that you can't have irrigation. I haven't seen any issue until you come here and ask for something. That water becomes a problem. They have not quit pond. They tell me, you know, we don't have any water. They look at that pond, that pond's at the same level it is when I went to 4th grade in that school. I've been in this town my entire life. They go to Stafford Pond, that water level is at the same level. They're telling me we don't have water. I don't see one Artesian well company going out of business. I don't see 50 people in this kind of time saying, oh, I ran out of water. I don't see that happening across this town. And for you to say that we don't have water, I think that's a wicked bogus statement. That just doesn't have enough science behind it, and I think it's a fear-based statement.
So you will hear from, on the presentation, what that actually means, and there is science behind it.
Okay.
And part of it is, at least in the areas that are covered by the two water authorities, we know, and they have told us, they're at 85% of their capacity right now.
Right.
Now, capacity doesn't just mean the amount of water. It means the infrastructure that can get the water to where they need to be with an adequate pressure for you to be able to use to take a shower and everything else.
So we need to grow the water system. It's not that we don't have the water.
Right, but right now, we don't have the capacity for some of these things.
We need to grow the infrastructure. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Oh, please, no clapping right now. Anyone else?
Come on, Joanne. Joanne has.
Oh, that's not Joanne.
What's that?
No.
Sorry. You look like somebody else.
Hello. Hello, my name is Liz Lopes, and I live on Old Colony Terrace. And I'm here basically because I'm concerned with the changes that this council has been making to our town. For what purpose were the changes in zoning required? Not for the townspeople, but for outside interest? You're restricting the size lots that can be sold. You're allowing others to get benefit. What's happening with the lot near seasons? It looks like that's now general commercial. Is that a change you wanted to do because you're in line with seasons, or that's how it looks?
We didn't change that.
We have, that's whatever that is.
That's highlighted, that's highlighted compared to the other areas.
We didn't change that. Why this all started was there was a lot of concern about the developments that were going up and the land that was being cleared. And the schools had some concern, because if these residential neighborhoods added too many children, we wouldn't have the capacity at schools. People also did not like the trees coming down, the developmental land, and that's why we put a moratorium on it and decided these lots, and you'll hear about it later, but these lots will get bigger, so less housing will go on them. A lot, a lot of people called us. It might not have been you, but we had a lot, a lot of concerns about this, and that's why we stopped it all. We put a moratorium for six months, and we asked the Planning Board and the representatives to work on this for us and give us suggestions.
Well, would the lots be grandfathered in? Say you have an acre or two acres, and the zoning...
We're going to get to that very soon, I promise.
I think your questions will be answered. Right now, we're trying to deal with specifically the prohibited uses.
Yeah.
No, thank you, and feel free to come back up.
No, 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 thank you. But it will, that's why I said I thought we should have the presentation, because I think it'll explain a lot of this to people who have concerns.
We're still on prohibited uses, right?
Yeah. So we're still on I. I'm here. Yes. All right, so we're still open. Anybody coming? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any of the councilors have comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I would like to make a mo, well, I'm going to read this room. Well, hang on a minute. So I make a motion, we approve proposed amendments to the Tiverton zoning ordinance...
Down here.
Oh, am I down? I'm sorry. Approve the proposed amendments to the Tiverton zoning ordinance revisions proposed to Appendix A zoning ordinance to amend in Article 2 definitions and Article 4, Section 15 prohibited uses.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? David?
Madam President, I'm going to vote yes on this, only with the understanding of why some of these are here, that I kind of like on that recreation aspect, but future councils can change this as...
Oh, we can change it also. Anytime. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? All right. Jay, approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan and Future Land Use Map. Presentation by the Planning Board Town Planner with an overview of the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning amendments. Then we'll have the Planning Board call to order a meeting, and there will be a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Town Council. Is this correct? Okay. So the presentation. Oh, you're doing it?
Good evening, everybody. Stu Hardy, Chairman of the Tiverton Planning Board, and I would like to call the roll and call the Planning Board to order so that we may begin a joint hearing between the Planning Board and the Town Council. And then we will immediately go to a presentation that our interim Town Planner, Ashley Sweet, has, which will be up on the screen. So I will start now with a roll call of our Planning Board members. Christopher Shriver is not here. William Gerlach, Janice Gomes.
Here.
Richard Taylor, Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Present.
Patricia Hilton. V.A. Lopes. Stephen Clark is not here. He's on vacation. So we do have a quorum, and our joint hearing with the Town Council is now in order. Ashley? Ashley has developed a very, very nice slide presentation, PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Stu. Ashley Sweet, I'm the interim—
Didn't you do that?
Ashley Sweet, the interim town planner. I'm going to make a presentation on behalf of the Planning Board that will walk you through the two types of zoning amendments that are before the council today, the dimensional standards and the conservation development. I'll give you a brief overview of both of those proposed zoning amendments, talk a little bit about the reason for those amendments, and then go through some frequently asked The current status of requirements in Tiverton is that you currently have a watershed protection overlay district that covers Stafford and Nonquit Ponds. It's over 20 years old at this point. It does need to be updated. It requires a minimum of three acres per a house lot in the primary zones for both watersheds and 100,000 square feet per unit in the secondary zone of Nonquit Pond. And again, this is current zoning requirement, so you already have these requirements in your zoning ordinance today. Anyone who develops within these primary or secondary watershed districts is required to do so as a rural residential development. That consists of three different types of applications: a rural frontage subdivision, a rural compound, and a rural subdivision development. Only the rural subdivision development requires an open space set aside, and it restricts the density to 50% of the density that would be allowed conventionally under a standard subdivision using the underlying zoning. Frontage and compound-style rural developments, they don't have an open space requirement, and they are developed at the conventional density. And frontage developments are permitted to actually flex the zoning requirements, meaning that you can request for those requirements to be less than what they are stated to be through an application to the Planning Board for subdivision. So this is what you currently have on your books today. This applies to, as I said, the watershed protection overlay district. The rural residential development is required as a mechanism for subdivision in that primary and secondary watershed. This is where those watershed areas are. There's one around Stafford Pond. There's one around Nonquit Pond. The Nonquit Pond one includes tributaries also as part of the watershed. The proposal that is before the Town Council is to create a zoning district that would require a minimum of 120,000 square feet, which is 2.75 acres. This would replace in its entirety the current portion of the town that is zoned as R80, which is an 80,000-square-foot requirement for the zoning district. It replaces a portion of the R60 zoning district, which is a 60,000-square-foot minimum lot size requirement around Stafford Pond, and it replaces a very small portion of the R40 zoning district, which is a 40,000-square-foot minimum lot size for any new development. So this proposal establishes new density requirements for multifamily housing. It actually requires more land per unit than the current standard in the R30 and R60 zones. The R30 and the R60 zones are the only zones in the ordinance where multifamily is permitted. That's not being proposed to be changed. They're not adding multifamily to any district. They're just simply changing the density requirements so that you need more land per unit in those two zoning districts. This is Upper Tiverton. This is the current zoning on the left. The proposed zoning is on the right. You can see the area around Stafford Pond that shows up in yellow in the map on the left, shows up in purple on the map on the right. That is a change from the R60 zone to the R120 zone. There is an area within the R40 zone on the left map that is proposed to be changed to the R120 zone on the right. The lower portion of Tiverton is zoned R80, except for those parcels that are zoned open space and the Village Commercial. The open space in Village Commercial remain as is, untouched, unresoned. The R80 district in its entirety is changed to an R120 district. So this does, will, if adopted, render some lots as nonconforming. What that means is that your lot is smaller than the minimum lot size. There is a provision in state law that says that any pre-existing legal nonconforming lot of record, meaning your lot exists today, it's a legal lot of record, you live on it, you use it, is not required to seek zoning relief based solely on the fact that you do not meet the minimum lot size. So if you are in what is now an R80, and that changes to an R120, you will be considered a nonconforming lot, but you will not be required to go to the zoning board to seek relief just based on the fact that you don't meet that zoning size. What happens is that your setbacks get automatically reduced proportional to the size of your lot. And I've given you an example here, where if you are in an R120, and you are an 80,000 square foot lot, so you were previously conforming at 80,000, you're now rendered nonconforming because your district was changed to 120. You are 67% of the required lot size. All of your setbacks are automatically reduced to 67% of whatever the district requirements are. So instead of a 50-foot front yard, you have a 33 and 1/2-foot. Instead of a 35-foot side, you have a 23.45-foot side. Instead of an 80-foot rear, you have a 53.6-foot rear. So you are essentially retaining your ability to expand on your lot, to put a shed on your lot, with this automatic reduction, as long as you stay within whatever the reduction that's provided. Sorry. There is also the ability that if you are, if you want to place something outside of the 23.45 feet, there is a provision, there is an ability to do that. You apply for either a modification or a variance. But you, just because you are rendered as a nonconforming lot by a zone change does not mean that you then can't do anything, or you can't expand, or you can't put your shed where you want to put your shed. You're getting an automatic proportional reduction to all of your dimensional requirements based on the fact that you're nonconforming. There are 17 other municipalities within the state of Rhode Island that have 120 zoning or larger. We've listed them here. Some of them have multiple, where they have three-acre, five-acre, 120 and 160. So we've given you a comparison here of those other 17 communities, and also shown you that, again, in Tiverton, in your watershed protection overlay district, you already have three-acre zoning. It doesn't show up on your zoning map, but you have it in the text of your ordinance if you fall within that watershed district. The second piece of amendment that is in front of the Town Council has to do with conservation development. Conservation development is a mechanism or a type of development process that you go through. It's a flexible design process. It's meant to accommodate growth while minimizing impacts to the natural environment. The reason that we're, and I'll get more into this, but part of the reason that we're doing this is that large lot zoning is often not enough to protect the natural resource. Conservation development produces high-quality and high-quantity protection of open space and natural resources. There is a 10-step design process that is put into the subdivision regulations, and the beginning of that process is to first identify the natural resources on the property and determine where are the places on this property that contribute to wildlife, that contribute to scenic character, that contribute to water quality improvement. And we set those aside, and we don't develop those. We save those so that they can continue to serve the function that they're serving, and then we put the development on the rest of the property. The development is directed to where it's most suitably located, so that we're not developing over the places where these natural resources are getting protected and preserved. We're developing adjacent to them and hopefully protecting those natural resources. So these are the specific sections that would amend conservation development. There is dimensional considerations that are part of conservation development. This would only apply to projects that create four or more units. If you split off one lot for a child, split off two lots for a child, not going to trigger conservation development. It is required in all of the residential zoning districts in town. We use what's called a yield plan, which determines the density that's permitted under conventional subdivision. So I have a lot. It's 40,000-square-foot zoning is the minimum. I have to design my lot based on the conventional subdivision. I have to lay out my road, my drainage, my infrastructure, conceptually, at a pretty high level, to say, this is what I could get under conventional subdivision. I get, you know, five units. 50% of the developable land is set aside as open space. The first step in that design process is selecting that open space and making sure that it is the most valuable open space for natural resource protection. And then we put those five units on the remaining land. We are, we will have updates to the subdivision regulations if this moves forward, and we have included provisions for multifamily development as part of that conservation Very quickly, example, this is from the Conservation Development Design Manual that was put out from DEM. Conservation development is a longstanding practice in planning. It's used all over the country. This is, you know, an example of a farm. This is what you might get under conventional development. You'll notice the original farm is not there anymore. This is turned into a large lot subdivision with significant amount of roadway, carving the lots up into, I'll guess, two or three probably acre zoning lots along the roadway. Under conservation development, you get the same number of lots, and that's a key part of this, is that it's density neutral. Nobody's getting less units than you would get under conventional subdivision. What we're doing is we're clustering those lots into the place on the property where they're going to have the least impact on the environment. So we get the same number of lots, actually preserved the farm and the fields, and we have less roadway and the same number of units. And that's the difference between a conventional development and a conservation development. You get better site design, and for better site design, you get higher value. And when I talk about higher value, I'm talking about a lot of different things. Conservation development lots, and there was a study done that was based in Rhode Island, and it's called "The Economies of Conservation Subdivision." If anyone's interested, you can look it up yourself. But there is a study that was done where they looked at the value of conservation lots versus lots in a conventional subdivision. The construction cost of conventional lots is, excuse me, of conservation lots is 40% less than the construction of conventional subdivision. They sell 47% faster than conventional lots. The lot prices per acre are 17% higher for conservation lots, and that's per acre. And that's an average of $42,000 on a $250,000 house. So when I talk about taxes in real estate, these lots in a conservation subdivision are valued higher because they are adjacent to permanently protected open space, as opposed to the lots in this subdivision, which are adjacent to the next person who's going to develop house lots. So the difference being those houses are going to be next to other houses. Those houses are going to stay next to permanently protected farmland, and there's a value in that. There is an environmental value. Conservation development goes a long way towards groundwater recharge and well protection. There is a scenic, wildlife, open space, and neighborhood character value that goes with conservation development as well, and you can see the difference here in these two site designs of the same piece of property. You get walking trails, you get open space, you get larger stands of trees and woodlands, and you get the lots that are clustered onto smaller and shorter roadway, which eventually equals a shorter road and less drainage for the town to maintain. So why are these updates being proposed? A host of reasons, but the town does have limited public infrastructure for water and wastewater, as was previously mentioned. We have a water district that is approaching 90% capacity. At some point, they will not be able to service without some major upgrade to their system. The majority of the town is served by private wells and septic systems. There is a water capacity of the two districts, and the sewer is relatively uncertain at this time, and there is a factor related to the population that they serve. They are, I believe, mainly funded by the USDA, which has a restriction that if you go over 10,000 people, they cannot fund you any longer. So there is a concern about funding. There are water pressure and supply issues that already exist. The private wells that we do have are on bedrock fractures. Tiverton has no underground aquifers. We have drought issues, and new wells that are sunk next to existing wells can adversely affect those wells that they're being drilled next to. We have the poorest soil categories of soil type for septic systems within the, with existing saturated soils. When you have high water tables and saturated soils, you have a higher risk of septic leachate, meaning that your septic system is, the water that you're pulling from your well is contaminated by your septic system, either your own or your neighbors. We have 20-plus years of density restrictions in the watershed. As I mentioned, you've got this three-acre zoning already in your watersheds. They have not produced positive results. You still have almost every water body in Tiverton is on the impaired water body list by Rhode Island DEM. So what you're currently doing is not improving water quality. And the effort that's being put forward is supported by the Tiverton Comprehensive Plan. It's supported by the State Guide Plan Element, Land Use 2025, which the Comprehensive Plan is required to be consistent with. It is a mechanism that is supported by the Center for Watershed Protection and the EPA. This is a map of Tiverton soils, just to give you an idea. The soils in red and orange are those that are considered with a high water table or hydroic soils and are not ideal for septic systems, and you can see that a majority of the town of Tiverton is red and orange. This is the list of impaired water bodies. It includes both of your drinking, surface water, drinking supplies, and I believe all, or if not most, of the brooks in the town are on the impaired water body list from Rhode Island DEM, and they're impaired by things you don't want in your water. The Comprehensive Plan in multiple places identifies drinking, both ground and surface supplies. supplies, the quality and quantity issues that Tiverton is facing as a critical resource issue. I've given you a couple of citations here, but specifically, it talks about the protection around these two drinking water sources, Stafford and Nonquit Pond, and that the future residential growth needs to be consistent with protecting those resources. It was discussed a bit earlier that there was a concern about current development pressure before the town. This is a summary of the number of units that are either proposed under construction or had recently completed construction within the town. This development pressure is expected to continue and increase with the South Coast commuter rail, and really is the driving force or initiating force behind the proposal in front of you when the council adopted a moratorium. This is the response from the Planning Board as a resolution to resolve these development pressure issues when you look at the natural resource issues alongside. This is to give you an example of how lot size and water quality are actually connected. This is from the EPA, which again is, this is supported by the Watershed Protection, Center for Watershed Protection. It's well documented that the impervious cover, and that's the amount of the property that is covered by something that doesn't allow water to infiltrate. So whether that's a roof or a driveway, it's whatever doesn't allow the water to infiltrate into the ground. If that is over 10%, that you, that that will cause water quality and habitat degradation. So increasing the lot size obviously reduces the impervious cover of that specific area. And the town sets the lot size requirements. DEM expects them to set it at a size that protects the resource. DEM cannot override the town's zoning. DEM cannot say to the town, your zoning is not doing enough to protect drinking water resources or any other water body. When they see all of those on the impaired water body list, they can't override local zoning. They expect the town to set density at what is appropriate to protect the natural resources. This chart gives you an example of how increasing lot size reduces the impervious cover on that specific property. Take that a little bit further. This is talking about how lot clustering has a connection to water quality, and this is why the Planning Board is proposing not just to increase lot size to 120, but is also proposing to couple that with requirements for conservation development. Because just making the lots bigger doesn't go far enough to actually achieve the water quality goals that we're looking for. When you make the lot sizes bigger, but spread that out across the entire watershed, you still end up with higher-than-wanted impervious cover throughout the entire watershed. When you increase the lot size but allow conservation development, which allows you to actually make those lots smaller but not change the overall density, you actually shrink down the area that you're impacting, and you reduce the overall impervious cover in the total watershed. This is a table that was recreated from the Comprehensive Plan. This is the, there's a build-out analysis in the Comprehensive Plan that looks at the available land for development. It is a relatively high-level build-out. I would venture to say it's probably a conservative build-out, and that this number is more likely higher than what's represented here. But essentially, what this is telling you is that this is the potential number of new units based on your existing zoning and what's available for developable land. So I'm going to go through some quick, frequently asked questions that hopefully may answer some of your questions. You're making me non-conforming, and now I can't use my lot or expand my house. We did cover that. As I said, you'll not need to seek relief based solely on the fact that you don't meet the minimum lot size. You will automatically receive those reduced setbacks, and there is a mechanism to go for a modification or a variance and request additional reductions based on your specific Why are you now requiring substandard lots to merge? Will I be merged with my neighbor's lot? Will I lose the use of my property? There is a lot merger provision in the zoning ordinance already. It is being amended by this proposal, but the only amendment that is proposed to that provision is to change the designation from R-80 to 120 so that it is consistent with the other changes that are being proposed. The lot merger thing is not new. It will not merge you if your lot is built on. It only merges two lots that are in the same exact ownership that are unimproved lots. So if you own two lots that are substandard, there's no house, no structure on either lot, that is the only way the merger provision would be triggered. If you own one lot with a house and the other lot is vacant, you're not merged. If you own one and your husband owns the other, you're not merged. If you own one and your neighbor owns the other, you're not merged, even if they're unimproved. You have to be in the same ownership, and they both have to be completely vacant. And it is not new. It is, it's been in there for, I don't know how many years, a long time. They're not proposing to change anything other than change that 120 to be consistent with the rest of the changes that they're, that are being proposed. If I don't have 120,000 square feet, will I still be able to have a garage, a shed, a deck, a pool, et cetera, use my property? Again, you'll get the reduced setbacks based on the proportion of your lot to the zoning district. All of your setback requirements will get that proportional reduction. We talked a little bit about this, but DEM regulates onsite wastewater treatment systems, otherwise known as septic systems, and, and water quality. Why is the town getting involved? Oop, that is not the right answer, sorry. The answer is that DEM expects the town to set that density requirement. The other thing that is important to understand about DEM is that they do not look at cumulative impact. They cannot look at cumulative impact. So they look at a single unit on its own. They do not look at the impact unit after unit after unit after unit when we've reached 50, you know, units. They look at one unit at a time. They do not look at the cumulative impact of the development. And they do not have the authority, nor will they have the authority, to tell the town that your, your zoning is not good enough for water quality. It's up to the town to make that determination and to, you know, impose that zoning. It costs more to develop a conservation development subdivision, and property owners and developers will lose money. Conservation development actually requires less infrastructure. There's less road, there's less drainage. That costs less to build. It costs less to design, and it costs less to maintain. It really costs everyone less money. As I mentioned, there is a study that details that the conservation development lots sell for more, sell faster, retain their value better, and are just more desirable. So what does conservation development do? It helps preserve water quality. It preserves the highest value natural resources on the property. It reduces the impacts to the land, to the ecological resources and the natural habitat. It reduces the cost of development by reducing the cost of infrastructure. It reduces the cost of infrastructure for maintenance for the town. It contains lots that are taxed and valued higher than those in conventional subdivisions, and it does provide opportunities for connected green space when you have multiple properties that develop as conservation developments. And the Planning Board can work with those applicants and make sure that we're creating connections between those spaces. Conservation development does not reduce development density. You got 10 lots before, you get 10 lots under conservation development. The whole purpose of the yield plan is to prove what you would get so that you can move forward and still have that. It does not reduce the value of lots within the development. It does not force small lot sizes in all instances. It does typically make the lots smaller, but it does not require that every single lot be shrunk to something unacceptable for the area or the neighborhood or anything like that. And it gives the, it gives the ability to vary lot sizes. You can have a 30,000 square foot lot, an acre lot, an acre and a half, a two acre, and you can get some variety within the subdivision instead of the standard cookie cutter. Every single lot is chopped up at 80,000 square feet along the, you know, 1,500 linear feet of roadway. It does not cost the developer more time or money. There's a process that we go through. We work with the developer. The 10-step process is based on readily available, mostly GIS mapping data that you can pull from state resources pretty easily, put onto a map, and we can work with the developer to go through the design process. Once we've done it a few times, it'll get easier, and everyone will get the hang of it, and it really will not cost any more time or any more money than a conventional subdivision. The key takeaway is that the Planning Board wants everyone to understand is that this proposal is, is the Planning Board's response to the Town Council's development moratorium that was discussed previously. This proposal has been reviewed and endorsed by the Planning Board and the Zoning Revision Committee, who have both spent a lot of time and energy working on the zoning ordinance. And this is a strategic approach for resource protection for those that already live here. We want to make sure that the people that are here and have homes and wells and water service continue to have that in a quality way. This is not just for those who want to develop in the future.
Thank you, Ashley. And, Madam Chairman, should we go on now to Comprehensive Plan? So our comprehensive community plan must be in alignment with zoning. So zoning, subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive community plan must all be aligned together and work together and, and be moving in the same direction and setting the same goals and objectives for the town of Tiverton. And our, our, our most recent Comprehensive Community Plan was developed and approved in 2017, 2018. So it does not reference, it does reference rural residential development, but it doesn't reference conservation development, nor does it specifically cite R-120 zoning. So we, we have made some minor adjustments or amendments to the Comprehensive Community Plan to introduce both of those concepts, the idea of larger lot zoning, going from R-80, for example, to R-120, and also building upon our existing rural residential development program to go another step to conservation development, as Ashley was describing a minute ago. So that's, that's a step that we need to take tonight. And my, I would like to, consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I would like to perhaps make two motions. The first motion would be to add to or amend the language, which is on the, on the town website and on the Secretary of State's website, in which all of us have received on the Planning Board and Zoning Revision Committee of the Comprehensive Community Plan amendments. To amend that, consistent with the state requirement, that we acknowledge that our Comprehensive Plan does not go into effect until it is, it is approved by statewide planning, by the state. So the state has to actually approve what we do. So the first amendment is in the nature of a procedural amendment to introduce language that the state requires whenever we amend our Comprehensive Plan, and I will read that language out. And, and this is again directly from the state. Quote, "The Comprehensive Plan amendments shall not become effective for the purposes of guiding state agency actions until it is approved by the state of Rhode Island pursuant to the methods stated in RI General Laws, Section 45-22.2, or pursuant to any rules and regulations adopted pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Sections 45-22.2. Further, the Comprehensive Plan of a municipality shall not take effect for purposes of guiding state agency actions until approved by the chief or the Rhode Island Superior Court." Unquote. So that, I would make that as a motion. Again, that would amend the, amend the Comprehensive Plan amendments that you have before you. I would make that as a motion. If I get a second on that motion, then we can have a discussion of it. But any, so Bill Gerlach has seconded the motion, so now, under Robert's Rules of Order, a discussion is in order. Is there any further discussion? Again, this is, Todd can answer this question. It's purely procedural.
The general laws require this language, as Stu had indicated earlier. We did not include it initially. We're fixing it now.
So this is, this is a quick fix. Since it's procedural and it's required, I will, is there any further discussion, any further comments anybody would like to make? And would this, and this is a public hearing, so it is subject to any public comments. Would anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Yes, but, 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 but this is a technical, we were, we will go on to a second amendment to actually adopt the amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and that's probably where you're going to want to speak. This is a technicality that the state imposes on the town of Tiverton.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. I, I recognize Jamie French for three minutes.
My question is, is when I looked at that wording that you were taking in and out of the Comprehensive Plan, I have a concern about why you're taking out the reservoir and pond.
So this is going to be dealt with on our second resolution that we, we will be making in just two seconds.
As to the word, what you are taking in and out.
Exactly. So, so again, this is a legal process that we're going through tonight, and we have to take it step by step in correct legal procedural order.
But it does say in our Comprehensive Plan that we are to amend our zoning to our Comprehensive Plan, not to amend our Comprehensive Plan to our zoning.
The state law says otherwise, Jamie.
Well, we're supposed to go, everybody always says you have to go by the Comprehensive Plan, and that's what is written in our Comprehensive Plan. So you may want to change that and take that out of the Comprehensive Plan, so there's less issues.
Thank you, Jamie. Is there anybody, would anybody else like to speak on this very procedural legal issue, technical issue? And I believe your name is Thomas Chase?
My name's Tom Chase. I own the property at 536 Highland Road. If you want it, it's not good for the rest of these people.
Thank you.
That's my comment. I have another one in a minute.
So I, I believe, I believe, I don't see anybody else from the public. Again, we're talking procedure here. We're, we're not, we're not talking the substance of the Comprehensive Plan. We're talking about a procedure where the state is requiring us to acknowledge that state agencies- that state agencies are not bound until they in fact approve.
That's correct.
Okay. And tell us your name.
Sal Marinosi. I'm not from the town. I'm from a neighboring town. I happen to serve on a planning board. I'm not speaking as a planning board member, however. I do caution you, however, to watch the well yields in this. PUDs are not new. Plan unit developments, conservation development, they're not new. In areas where you have real problems with water, pay attention to that. Permanent situations can be had by using retainage and detainage, and your roads can be changed. You don't need asphalt roads. There's a lot of things you can do to change this without just reducing a lot size.
Right. And, and, and we, we have recently had a low impact development assessment of the town of Tiverton done that has produced over 60 recommendations for changes to our subdivision regulations primarily that would introduce some of these concepts that you just mentioned.
Then, then good. But you are right about.
We are just now beginning to pay attention to water, which has been, which is a huge problem. Water is a huge problem in Tiverton, and we're just now beginning the process of paying attention.
And good luck with it.
So thank, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna now ask the planning board members to vote on the motion that I made, and Bill Gerlach seconded. All of those in favor? Okay. Now, the, the next motion, and I will, again, Robert's Rules of Order, I will make the motion if I get a second, then we can have a discussion and we'll bring the public into this. This is actually a motion to approve the language that we have developed to, to make changes, to make changes to something called the Future Land Use Map. That is in Chapter Five of our Comprehensive Community Plan. It's actually Figure Five dash four, and it's really important to, because it, it, it gives everybody an understanding of how we would like our map to look in five or 10 years. And so, again, we're making an amendment to that map to show a new R-120 zone, replacing the R-80 zone in portions of R-60 and R-40. We also made very minor textual amendments to three chapters of our comprehensive plan. Chapter three is the planning concept chapter. Chapter four is natural and cultural resources, and Chapter Five is land use. And so we made very minor amendments in our comprehensive plan, just to introduce the concept of conservation development program, building on our existing rural residential program, and also introduce the idea of a, of a new R-120 zone. So all of that, again, as I said earlier, is, is available on the town website and the Secretary of State's website, or in hard copy in the planning office. So I would now like to make an amendment, and again, we'll have a discussion about this. I would like to make a motion. I hereby move that the Tiverton Planning Board recommends that the Tiverton Town Council adopt the comprehensive plan text amendments and Future Land Use Map as amended, since they are consistent with the need to adopt protections for Tiverton's existing limited natural resources, in particular its diminishing water supply, and will further the comprehensive plans call to make such protections. And do I have a second to that motion? VA has seconded it, and, and I should mention that, again, the process is that changes to the comprehensive plan, and we can make, I believe, four a year. We can make four different amendments to the comprehensive plan in any given calendar year. This, this is the first we've made in calendar year 2024. It starts with the planning board, so it starts here, but then we make the recommendation to town council, and town council actually adopts that recommendation, or not, as they see fit. So that's what we're doing in this motion. We're asking town council to adopt the recommendations that we have made. So I'm, I'm going to turn to my colleagues and ask if they have any comments or questions, and then I'll open it up to the, to the general public. I'm, I'm not seeing any comments from my colleagues, so again, I'm happy to open this up to the general public. And when you come up to the mic, please state your name and address. So we now have Mr. Chase.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Chase. My property is at 536 Highland Road in Tiverton. I'm the 90 acres of property that they've taken in the middle of the high-density zoning area and turned it into a low zen, low-density zoning area for some odd reason. It's sort of like spot zoning. If you know what spot zoning is, it's typically illegal, and that's what they're trying to do. All of the presentation that was here, she had a lot to say. It's what she didn't say that's important. Things like, if you have a conservation subdivision, a lot of the towns in the state of Rhode Island allow for a bonus on top of the house lots. Like, say you had a, that is true.
For conservation development?
For conservation development.
You have my email. Please send me the copies.
Absolutely. You, you spewed quite a bit of misnomers here. So as far as, I'm only concerned about my property and the planning and zoning board, but, of course, it's obvious. Are you, are you, are you interested in your property?
Uh, sir.
There you go.
Please, please speak to the issue.
So, the issue is, you are changing the zoning of my property from R-40 to R-120. So with that in mind, my comments are, leave me and my property out of your land grab. Two, this is, this is a spot zoning on me, and that is illegal. And I guess three, other than the fact that this is coming from the Tiverton Land Trust and not necessarily the Tiverton Planning Board, since Stu used to be on the head of the Tiverton Land Trust.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
And by the way, that's incorrect.
That is not incorrect. You, you, you people, you people are too much. Okay. So my, my last, my last point is, if you want to, you can join me in the lawsuit that's coming right after they vote this in. My number is 849-7000. You can join me anytime.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to be heard?
Oh, one, one more thing.
Your three minutes is up.
No, it isn't. Besides that, I am, I am speaking directly to the planning board.
No, you're not.
You should all quit. You're useless.
All right, you're out of order.
Um, yes, Carol?
Carol Herman, Main Road. I support the R-120 zoning, and my question is, in terms of the 66 acres north of 24, just south of Souza Road and west of Viti, that's currently zoned R-40, why was that not considered a candidate for R-120 zoning?
As of right now, while it's, we have not had any final decision one way or another, there is an application that is open with the planning board, that has been open with the planning board, and once that application has been filed and certified complete, which it is, you, oh, it's not complete. Well, it's been, it's been submitted, and it has been presented in front of the planning board. So the determination was not to try, in the middle of someone's application in front of the planning board, to change that zoning.
But legally, you could do that. They would go in and continue to apply under the R-40 zoning, but should they walk away, the next applicant would be held to the R-120, correct?
If we changed the zoning on that portion.
I would ask you to include those 66 acres in the new R-120 zoning.
Thank you, Carol. We can't do that. Can't, you cannot have property. So it, would somebody else from the public like to be heard? Again, we're talking about the comprehensive community plan amendments.
Yes. Jamie French, Craig Avenue. There were several things. I have a lot of issue with the land use map because it shows high density for R-30, and you could, after, there's not, you don't even have the future land use map shown. All you do is show the zoning map. But with the future land use map, there's not much left of R-40. It's all waterfront mostly. And I don't know why you don't combine North Tiverton with, with Stone Bridge and make it one large area. And North Tiverton is not high density, it's medium density at best, and it should be protected, as should the land on Souza Hill. The future land use map shows that the Safford Pond watershed buffer on the west side is zoned industrial, some of it. So if we're so interested in preserving our water, why do we have that part of our watershed zoned industrial? Why is the Bourne Mill zoned industrial? Why is there no buffer between residential and industry? We have industry across the street from residential, and in one place, it's residential on three sides. Why do we have, why do we have no business allowed south of Burger Marsh? No business. I mean, does that use, does a, does a little variety store take up too much water? I, I mean, does it take up more water than someone with a swimming pool in a large home? Why is there, and I assume stables, riding stables are exempt from that because that must be some kind of home business. So all of the, all of the commercial business will basically be in North Tiverton, if you can get there because it'll be so high density, you won't be able to drive up and down the roads. There's no protective, nothing that was put in helps the northwest side of town. The Stone Bridge area and Main Road have nothing, no protective anything from this project. It's, and there's no use tables, so I don't even know how we're talking about things without use tables. We have, the water situation is, is we have two private water districts, they're not public, and it's not an infrastructure issue. The issue is that the design was built in 19, North Tiverton's design was built in 1924 for single-family homes, not for 275 home developments, not for multi-story, not for power plants, not for casinos. And so the design has been finalized. You can change the infrastructure, but the design itself cannot be added on to.
Jamie, you're, you're exceeding your three minutes, but, but, excuse me.
I would like to just add, you were taking out reservoirs and recreation from the, from the use, from the, from the comprehensive plan.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to respond because I think the general audience here, including the, the audience on YouTube, really needs to understand what is going on. As, as President DiMaderis mentioned earlier, the development pressure, the residential developments and projects that were coming into the planning office were so numerous and so large in size in terms of the units, that we realized that it would have a dramatic impact on Tiverton, on Tiverton's public infrastructure, like schools and water and sewer and roads, and also on, on our, a, a real overburden on our, our very poor soil conditions that Ashley reviewed a minute ago, that, that might cause serious problems with septic lead shake polluting wells. So that was so serious that the planning board went to town council and asked for a moratorium on any new residential developments of more than four units. And, and what we were tasked with doing back in January was to come up with a strategy that would address the issues of, of, of town infrastructure and town environmental conditions, and that's what we're doing tonight. We are not, we are not completing the process of rezoning the town of Tiverton. We are not completing the process of redoing our subdivision regulations. That will go on for another year or two. So many of the issues that Jamie just raised in her question, and by the way, we're not getting into a debate or a discussion about this, but many of the issues that you raised about where the industrial zone is, where the waterfront zones are, you know, what's going to happen in North Tiverton, those are issues that the planning board will be dealing with in the future. What we're dealing with right now are two kind of emergency stopgap issues, both very closely related, to increase R-80 to R-120 in parts of R-40 and R-60 as well, and to build upon conservation development. And we think that those two initiatives, when they're combined, will get a, will get a, a firm grip on future development pressure from residential, from the big residential projects that are coming in. So, but keep in mind, we still have a north end project going on, looking at the whole north end of Tiverton and the industrial park. That's going to go on for another year, so there's an awful lot more work to be done. But what we're doing right now is, is just, just a stopgap emergency measure.
But you haven't provided any protection. You have not provided.
No. We are not getting into a debate or a discussion. Please return to your seat, or I will ask the marshal to remove you.
Is North Tiverton going to be urban removal? That's what I'm asking.
There's a few things I want to clarify. There was a lot said, but there's a couple of things that stuck out to me that I, I want to clarify. There's two maps being changed. There's a zoning map, and there's a future land use map. A future land use map is a map that is in your comprehensive plan and basically designates for 20 years, for the life of the plan going forward, what the future land uses in Tiverton will be. And if you compare those two maps, you'll see that the districts mimic each other in terms of where they're located. That's intentional because the town is required to make its zoning comport with its future land use map within 18 months of adopting it. So if we were adopting a future land use map independently, without dealing with zoning at the same time, we'd have 18 months to make our zoning comply with our future land use map. The future land use map uses general designations of, of, of areas, even though it matches the zoning districts, they're not the same thing, you'll notice, on the future land use map. It doesn't use the designation of R-30, which is a 30,000 square foot lot, for the area of North Tiverton. It uses the term high-density residential. The term high-density residential is defined in the comprehensive plan as an area of 30,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. Not 9 million people per acre, Jamie, not anyone else's definition of high density. It's Tiverton's hot definition of high density. So just because it says high density does not mean it's going to turn into anything other than what the zoning map says you can do with the district. It's the same thing for It's the same thing for medium-density residential. It's basically categorizing areas under certain provisions that then you go to the, to the text of the comprehensive plan, and it says, "For this plan, for this map, high-density residential means 30,000 square foot lot size." It doesn't mean anything other than that, despite what is being said. So the fact that your zoning map and your comprehensive plan map match, your future land use match, we want them to match. That's the whole process, and that's why we're doing both of these at the same time. But what you need to pay attention to in terms of development of lot sizes and density of development is your zoning map, not your future land use map, because that's a general characterization of those districts, which are then defined in the text section. The other thing I want to clarify is Jamie says we're getting rid of on the future land use map, and she's correct, we are getting rid of some things, but there's a reason for them. So we're making amendments to not just the map, but the language that describes the categories on that map. So your previous categories included, it called it an industrial technology district. Well, we changed the name of it to match the actual document that dictates what happens in the industrial park to be the planned development park, because that's what it is. So we're making that change to make it more consistent. We're also amending the language to reflect the, the regulations that govern that area. We are removing the category of permanently protected outdoor recreation area overlay. We're removing it because it, it wasn't meaningful on a future land use map. It was duplicative of other property, and it was, it was, it was segmenting out protected open space by ownership in a way that a future land use map shouldn't do. So we're not getting rid of it. It's already covered in another portion of the future land use map designation. We're just removing the category because it's, it's already part of another category. We got rid of reservoirs and ponds and crossed that out because that's not a future land use. You can't live on a reservoir, on a pond, like it's, you don't build on them. You don't typically contain on your future land use map water bodies. We show the water bodies, but it's not a classification of land use, and that's what a future land use is meant to do. It's meant to classify your categories of land use. So we took out reservoirs and ponds because it's not a land use. It doesn't belong there. We actually added in the watershed protection overlay district because you have it, and it should be on your future land use map in order to be consistent with your zoning ordinance. So that was an omission that we're adding in to make sure that there's consistency between the future land use map and the zoning map. Like I said, there was a lot there. I think those were the two things that stuck out to me. I don't know if there's anything else you want me to...
Thank you, Ashley. Does anybody else care to comment on this motion? Okay, we have two people.
My name is Margaret Mederos. I live at 33 Bay Street in Tiverton, well-known as the disaster area that had the soup. I own a house there on 33 Bay. I also own three undeveloped lots. Recently, I own it with my cousin, who's tenant-in-common, and we wanted to sell it. We had a lot of people that were interested. They would come, they would go to the town hall, and nobody was interested. So I found out, after owning this land for nine, this land has been in my family for 90 years. Taxes have been paid by us for 90 years. What I found out was in 2014, this was changed to a waterfront-related uses. Now, this property that I own is, faces Bay Street. Between Bay Street is the railroad tracks, the railroads no longer run, and then the tank farm is behind it. Now, under this definition, it says the water, I can't sell it because I have to now, it has to have what it states here, waterfront-related future use designation for certain non-residential and mixed-use areas along the Secana River, which primarily water-dependent commercial uses are appropriate and rely on waterfront access for business. I don't understand, number one, how, being a taxpayer, I wasn't notified that this was going to change by the zoning. Number two, if the land is not, I can understand where the tank farm is, because it's on the river. There's a railroad track between, and this is on Bay Street, which I thought, paying taxes all these years, that I would be able to sell it or develop it for my children. And then I go down and I find this out. I want to know how come this happens? Like when Mr. Chase was talking, and it seems like all of a sudden, you own land and then you're told what happens with it. So please answer me. I don't know if you can answer this question.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what document you're referring to.
I'm doc...
But what we're dealing with tonight...
This here, that says comprehensive, over here on page five, there's waterfront-related uses. In this map that you showed, see this blue area? This is the land that I own. Up here, up in the corner here in Massachusetts. The sewerage across the street from us, right there.
The waterfront, waterfront-related uses language in the comprehensive plan is not being amended. That's existing language. There's no, you can tell the difference between amended language and existing language by crossouts and underlines. If it's crossed out, it's being proposed to be struck and removed. If it's underlined, it's being proposed to be added. Any text that you see in any of these documents that is just plain text without strikeout and without underline exists today.
When I called the office, I was told it changed in 2014.
I don't know, I don't, again, that was 10 years ago. I don't know who you talked to. I don't know what the context of that conversation was. What I'm telling you is that what is on line 181 through 184 on page five of the Comprehensive Community Plan document...
I know what you're saying.
...is existing language and is not part of the application before the planning board or town council this evening.
Before this evening. So I don't get an answer. How does, how does this happen? How do you own property for over 90 years? The house I live in was built in 1930. How do you own property and then find out when you go to sell it that you can't because it requires water use? And it's on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's not even on the water, but it's waterfront. It's not waterfront, it's water view, not waterfront. That's my question for this...
Yes, thank you. We're not dealing with that tonight. It's a good question that you raise, and you should perhaps come to some of the North Tiverton committee meetings that, that is chaired by Councilmember Mike Burke. We've been having a number of meetings, and, and what you, your, the issues that you raise are appropriate and can be dealt with there, but we're not dealing with that tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just note that I don't know that the North Tiverton group is going to get to her question, which is, from what I'm hearing, she is stating that when the change was made 20 years ago...
10.
10 years ago, she says she was not notified of the possibility that was changing and did not get an opportunity to be heard.
When we're done here, I'll see you and get your name. I'm the solicitor for the planning board, okay? And we'll figure something out, okay?
All right.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Jennifer Barrera. I live at, on Stafford Road in Tiverton. I am a relatively new resident to Tiverton, but I'm a lifelong Newport County resident, and during the day, my day job, I serve as the Chief Strategy Officer for the Reliant Coalition to End Homelessness. I have some data that didn't quite make it onto the slide presentation, that 22% of homeowners in Tiverton are cost-burdened, meaning they're paying almost $4,000 or more per month for their rent, I mean, for their homeownership. They're paying more than 50% of their income to own their home in Tiverton. More than 42% or almost half of the renters in Tiverton are cost-burdened, meaning they are paying more than their 50% of their adjusted gross income towards housing costs in Tiverton. What this proposal is doing is greatly reduce, both the proposal, the, the comprehensive plan update related to the zoning, it's reducing the ability to be creative in addressing the housing issue. The development pressure that you all are referring to is real, and the pressure is because the people from this town who are having children, who are growing up and wanting to come back to the town where they live in, cannot afford to buy a house here. People who are working in the farms and all of the retail areas and restaurants, they can't afford to live and work in this community. Teachers, firefighters, police officers, they can't afford to live in Tiverton and work in Tiverton. So in order for this town to continue to sustain a thriving community, they also need to be keeping an eye on amendments like this, which is a bit of a wolf in sheep's clo, sheep's clothing. I heard a statement from Madam President related to the school having concerns about the 899 units that are proposed, bringing more children to the schools. People are having fewer children because they can't afford to. So I think that that's a rather antiquated view and concern. I haven't seen a lot of data presented tonight, which supports the housing costs and the housing crisis that the entire nation is facing, and I just would like for everyone on the town council to consider that in their decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just briefly respond to that. While I think the entire state has made it clear that Rhode Island is short of houses, the purpose behind what we're doing tonight is not to say, "We just don't want more houses and we don't want more people." But when you talk about the cost of housing, it's not just the mortgage, right? It's the property taxes, it's the insurance, it's also things like paying your water bill and all those other kinds of things. If we put ourselves in a position where we have developed beyond the land's capacity to provide us water, and then, you know, we have to go out, the, the water districts, which have the authority to go out to bond, to upgrade their infrastructure, those costs won't be borne just by the, the office staff at the water district. Those all get passed on to all of the taxpayers, all of the citizens who are using that water. If we don't have enough infrastructure for things to be able to support the development we have, putting that infrastructure into place will become a burden of the taxpayers. Tiverton has a bit of difficulty in that we have a very relatively small amount of land for commercial businesses, and we are somewhat limited in that we don't have a lot of public sewer, and a lot of businesses really don't want to operate on septic systems. They want to go someplace where they can connect to public sewer because it's just, ask a restaurant owner how hard it is to operate a restaurant on a septic system. It is not easy. So, you know, one of the things about, about development is that as we have a, if we don't have a balance between commercial and residential development, then eventually, the property taxes are going to continue to rise and rise and rise and rise and rise because there will not be enough commercial to offset the growth in residential property taxes, because that's just the, the structure of how budgeting works. And so this is not about, "We don't want to find houses for people." This is not about, "We don't want more houses because we're, we're just, you know, sort of, we've had enough." This is really about making sure that we can support what we have, and that by supporting what we have, we ensure that we don't push costs onto homeowners for things like infrastructure and things like water, because we haven't been cautious about protecting the resources that we have.
So just to add one thing to that, I'm, I appreciate what was said about the housing crisis and the affordability issue, because it is absolutely real, and it's not just in Tiverton, it's across Rhode Island, it's across the country, and it's a real issue. But what I can't get behind, and you had me until you said the sheep in wolf's clothing, because that's not an accurate representation of what's going on here. Nobody here is trying to pull the wool over your eyes and, and trick you into believing, you know, that this is a good idea for the wrong reasons. It's the responsibility of the planning board and the planning department and the town council to, to balance interests. So what we're doing here tonight is we're trying to balance the interest of natural resources. To Tricia's point, we're trying to make sure that there's water so that those houses that do get developed, when they turn on the tap, water comes out of it, and it's there for all of you who live here, and there for the people who come here. And it's their job to not stop there and also look at, now that we've done this, what else do we need to do? This isn't, this isn't the end-of-the-road kind of situation. This is, the North Tiverton group is looking at North Tiverton, the zoning committee is looking at all the zoning in the entire town, and housing is part of that discussion in both of those, both of those forums. The town is also, has grant money and is working with both of the water districts to try to do a water capacity analysis to better understand, what do they have in terms of not just supply, but in, like, how, how do we get the water to where it needs to go without causing problems for pressure and delivery elsewhere in the system? If the system has to get upgraded, what does that look like? How much does that cost? We are doing, they are putting these pieces in place. They don't all happen at the same time. This is one piece of a puzzle, but I don't want you to think this is just like, you know, we're just going to stop here. We have to look at all of these components independently, but it's their job to look at these holistically and to make these decisions and balance the interest of water quality, the environment, the people who live here, the people who want to live here, with those other things like housing. And what does the additional development do for the roadway network and the services that are provided by the town? And how do we keep up with that and continue to pay for it without raising costs? It's all an interconnected network, and this, I want everyone to understand that it's not being looked at, you know, in a silo. We're not just looking at one piece of it. There's other things that are happening that are not before these groups this evening that are looking at those other aspects.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathy Calibery. I live at 14 Ocean View Avenue. I thought this meeting was going to include North Tiverton. I didn't even know there was a committee for North Tiverton. So I would like some information on that because North Tiverton's sinking. It's, you can't build anymore. You just can't. My mother died 21 years ago. She lived in Garden Heights, and it was overflowing then. God knows what it's like now, because I don't know anyone that lives there, but the septic systems were always overflowing. You've got to stop building in North Tiverton. You've got to spread it out. Put this stuff in the industrial park. Put these houses, there's 15 acres out in South Tiverton. You've got to spread this out. You're killing us in our area. I live just up from Ford Farm, so when I moved there, there were cows there. I loved it, it was great. It was 44 years ago. 20 years ago, they started building McMansions on the farm, which I was told by someone that worked at DEM, they would never allow building on that farm because everything flows down into the bay. Somebody got paid off, obviously, because there's big houses there. And now there's a house going up, which we have been listening to a pneumatic hammer since last fall. I went to Florida for the winter, they were blasting while I was gone. Came back home, they're using the pneumatic hammer again, all on this one lot that never should have been sold, because the ledge there is long and it's deep. Even when the water guys came out from Ferrera that just replaced our water lines, they spent an entire day at the corner of Bayview and right in front of my house, which is 14 Ocean View Avenue. An entire day at each place, just trying to bang through the ledge. So that property shouldn't have been developed. It is, that is what it is. But please stop building in North Tiverton, please.
Well, I, I, I think that your issue is well-taken, but I think this is the wrong forum for it.
But we didn't know that. You know, some of my neighbors were here and they got disgusted and left. They said, "What's this about?" I said, "I don't know, I'll stay and figure it out."
Okay, well, I will, I will try to get that information to you so that you are aware of the committee that is dealing just with North Tiverton and the industrial park, because we're discussing all of those issues. I happen to serve on that committee.
That's what I want to, I want to talk about. That's what I want to, I want to talk about.
And I will, I will make sure that I, that I alert you to future meetings.
Is this crematorium going in or is that still stuck in the forest?
Again, that's not something we're discussing tonight, but it is.
Well, how do I find this information out? I've called the town hall, nobody tells me anything.
Come to our meetings.
So you could...
What do you think I'm doing, honey? I come to these meetings and I get so disgusted, I'd rather pull my eyelashes out one at a time.
So all of these meetings are publicly posted, there's an agenda that's...
I look in the second times every week.
If you give me a second, the town clerks...
It's frustrating.
They're posted in the town hall, they're posted on the website, they're posted on the Secretary of State's website, and you can actually go, and we'd be happy to help you in the planning department. You can go to the Secretary of State's website and you can select any committee that you're interested in and check an alert button for it, and every time an agenda is posted for that particular committee, you will receive an email.
I would like that.
So the planning department would be happy to help you.
Can I give you my phone number?
You can.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to be heard on this motion?
I would like to be heard, my name is Raymond Johnson.
So we're, again, we're talking about the comprehensive plan amendment.
We're talking about the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, a comprehensive plan.
So tell us your name.
My name is Raymond Johnson, 691 Brayton Road. I've been watching this comprehensive plan and your planning for the last 50 years, and every time I see something with this comprehensive plan, I see it as more of a segregation plan. And I want to know what this change in this plan does for diversity in this town? Can anybody tell me what your change does for diversity in this town? What does it do to achieve the American dream of being able to afford a home? You want to increase the property, the property size where you can't even, you can't afford a two-acre lot, you know, you want it to be a three-acre lot? How does this, explain it to me. How does this help? What does it do for humanity? Does it do anything for humanity? You always talk about doing this stuff on the back of conservation and water reserve, but what do you do for humanity?
Water.
You've already saturated North Tiverton and done what you want to do up there. North Tiverton's saturated, now you're going to worry about water. All you're doing is, you're not bringing any diversity to this town. You're killing people from being able to have the American dream. That's it, that's all I got to say.
I grew up in this town, I know my kids from the ocean.
So, well, as the token brown person on this board, I would like to address this a little bit, because these are very, I mean, our country is built on, you know, the wrong side of the tracks. I grew up in, I guess it's Father de Fario, but Hillside Manor and Fall River, and I now live in Tiverton. I went to college at Penn State. Yes, this is a hard road to go, but the reality is, is this is not about segregation, it's about ensuring that whoever lives in this town has clean water. And that's, it's concern, and I've lived in Jersey City, New Jersey. I lived in, I moved here from East Newark, New Jersey, where my daughter was taking a bath and the water was brown because of the pipes are just rusted. So there's, there's a reason we're doing this, and it doesn't, it's, I understand, like, hey, I mean, I think I, my family moving here doubled the black population. I mean, it just is what it is. However, I don't think this is, I feel that and I hear that, and I think with the train station coming in, that's going to change diversity in this area. It's going to change the face of this town. It's just, that's what trains do, that's what transportation does. So I think that's inevitably going to happen, but I think the cost of living in this country is not something this planning board is going to answer, and that's the problem.
Thank you, VA.
David Carden from 4100 Main Road, taxpayer whose zoning would go from R80 to 120. And I applaud first off and thank the council for convening this conversation and for having the zoning, zoning board look at these very important issues. And I also want to compliment the city planner on the presentation that she made, which I thought was extraordinarily comprehensive. I also want to say, before I say a few things which I think might be helpful, I appreciate everybody out there because we live in the same town, and I care very much about you because we live together. Our water is the same water, our pollution is the same pollution, the air we breathe is the same air. So I don't care just about my farm, I care about your property, which leads me to the following few comments. I bring to the attention, for whatever purpose it may bring, the Ocean and Coastal Journal from 2018, which talks comprehensively about the impacts of climate change and precipitation on septic systems. I think what's happening with regard to our water here has been recognized by the zoning board, and I think that what they have done is a very important first and very large step to trying to solve a very big and perhaps intractable problem. We have a community that is extraordinarily dependent upon septic systems, myself included. Precipitation makes those systems not work very well, this has been extraordinarily well documented. The more concentrated you make housing, the more concentrated you make septic systems, the less functional they are, the more pollution they cause, more groundwater pollution they cause, the more pollution they cause to our drinking water. This is something that is not open to discussion or debate, it's just there, it's something which our community is going to have to deal with going forward, as are many communities in the Northeast in particular and in the South. This is a problem which I think we need to begin to look at now because we have antiquated septic systems, we have septic systems that are going to be saturated, are not going to function properly, and that's going to impact not only our water quantity, which is already in peril based upon the fact, which we've heard many times, the geology of this area, but also because of the pollution. That's why I say we're in this together. If we don't get this right now, there's no cleaning up the groundwater. I just dug 500-foot well to get an acre, pardon me, a gallon of water a minute, and it costs quite a lot to do that. So the, the task at hand here is today's changes, which I think are extraordinarily important, that be adopted, and tomorrow's comprehensive look at what can we do about perhaps extending the sewer lines, what all, what all it's going to take. And the more concentrated you have housing, the more possible it is to actually extend sewer lines and infrastructure, a cost savings in the future. So I have nothing further to add, I think what's been done here by this committee is extraordinary. I think that the work you've done is something we all owe a debt of gratitude to, and thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Carden.
Hello, my name is Robert Schaub, I live at Captain Circle in Tiverton, the town of Tiverton. I wanted to see it become the city of Tiverton. And this young lady right here, Ms., when you presented your thing up there, you had to admit that there was something wrong in that paper that was written up there. That's kind of a little deceptive at first. So right off the bat, there's a little bit of confusion, I asked for you to halt this and pause this, because I want to see the character of this town change, and that's where it seems like it's headed. The character of this town, this wonderful town, is going to be changed. So please pause on this, and don't try to rush anything through, or else there'll be a lot of people voting that will be running for the seats, maybe a lot of you'll get voted out. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Rickerby, I live at 68 April Lane. Boy, you guys know how to stir up a hornet's nest. I also want to thank you, I think you're volunteers, God help you. And I want to emphasize that we are all in this as a town, we are all in this as a town because, not because we share water, oh, that's valid, but because development is coming. It's coming, guys. They're putting in a train station. Development is coming. This is about how we manage it, how we plan for it. If I went and picked my little piece of property out, I could be like, "Oh, I want this to be this and this to be that." I'm not going to do that, because, he's right, we're not zoning individual lots here. As a town, development is coming in large quantities to change us. The town will not be what it was. And I say this because I'm a carpetbagger, I've lived here, I think I'm going into my third year now. But I grew up in Bethel, Connecticut, on the local train from New York City, 40 miles outside of New York City, on a bucolic farm with 10 acres. And I grew up there, and it was, and it was exactly like Tiverton is now. And my wife grew up in the same area, and we moved to Tiverton because it reminded us of Fairfield County in the 1970s. But if you go to Fairfield County now, you have two kinds of towns. You have towns that are just McMansion, 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 strip mall, strip mall, strip mall, that nobody wants to live in, and then you have towns which, you know, where they have these beautiful estates and where everything is a $2 million teardown because everybody wants to live in that town because it is a desirable environment. And you, in your excellent presentation, little, little wordy from me on the legal side, but your excellent presentation said a lot of things about conservation development, but you didn't say the most important thing. Conservation development doesn't just make those lots more valuable, conservation development makes the other lots on the same road more valuable. For most of us, I'm going to bet for almost all of us, our real estate is our biggest single asset, right? And I do, I care about diversity, and I care about affordable housing, those are important things that we need to deal with, but those are forces that the commuters from, from Boston are going to offset in and of themselves. But we are going to, I got so impassioned, I lost my train of thought. We need to plan so that we have a town that we do recognize for the rural lifestyle that we loved, where we don't have, "Oh, surprise, surprise, they put in five new developments, 2,000 new houses, so..." Some real estate developer from out of town who doesn't even vote here, but owns a lot and likes to come up and say, "Well, I own this lot," when he isn't actually even a resident of the town. Some people like that make a bunch of money and then leave, and the rest of us all of a sudden have to pay for a new school or a new sewer system. Yeah, there's plenty of water if we want to put in a desalinization plant at God knows how many millions of dollars, right? It's about money, and it's about responsible planning. Development is coming, and this group of volunteers sat down with all of our competing interests and tried to work out something that was fair. At least, it looks to me like they did, and yeah, they pissed some people off, "You guys, you pissed me off personally, I would like to change some lots," but you tried to work out something that was fair, and you can change it. This is like, we're not just done now, "Oh, we have one plan, we're never changing it again." You, the town council, can change it in the future, but we need to do something now, because unlike what the last person said, postpone this so that nothing changes. Change is coming. This is what stops that, this is what slows that, this is what allows us to control that change in a responsible way, because we are all in this together, all right? So I urge the adoption, and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Okay, I, I don't believe I see anybody else.
Yes, you do.
But no, Liz is just changing her, you, you... Liz, have you already spoken on this?
Oh, this is something different. I wanted to thank you for your presentation. My name is Liz Lopes from Old Colony Terrace, and I have a question about the 599 proposed houses that are being considered. Will they be approved under the old regulations or the new? Or do you have to...
We can't answer that question at this time.
That's a pending application before the board. So if you have specific questions about development applications, you can contact the planning department and we can answer your questions.
Okay, but in the meantime, they'll all be considered under the old.
Okay.
Leon Sylvia, 3998 Main Road, Tiverton. A couple of questions. The conservation plan, you talk about separating septic systems from wells, doesn't a conservation plan push everything closer so now you have a closer distance from septics and wells? Wouldn't that pollute water more than having it spread out?
So...
Because you talk about spreading things out, how you're going to have water quality issues and everything, but then you talk conservation plan where you're putting 10, 15 lots all together and not spreading it out. Some, that's just a question.
Yep, no, I understand your question. Excuse me. I think the conservation development is a, there's an offset, so I understand your point is that if I develop a piece of property, I cut it up into two-acre lots, I've spread those well and septic systems all throughout the entire property, and I've separated people's well and septic systems from each other for certain distances. The separation of distance that's required under DEM is still going to happen, because DEM is not going to allow a septic system and a well to essentially cross, crossover, so there's a minimum setback requirement. That setback requirement stays, they have to maintain that setback requirement. The, the piece that I think you're missing is that there is a protection of open space that far outweighs in value what it's contributing back to the preservation or the, the increase of quality of drinking water, because 50% of that property is now conserved, whereas previously it was all chopped up and provided as part of a, an independent lot where it could, all the trees could have been cut down. If I own the two acres, I can go in and I can clearcut that, and we've lost the value of that lot remaining as a wooded property, which the, the fact that it stays as a wooded property is what makes it, that's what cleans the water, essentially. So we're, we're preserving a huge portion that would not have been preserved before, so even though, I understand your point, is that now all the wells and septics are over here.
If you're worried about taking somebody's water, though, now you have 10, 15 wells all going to be within 1,000 feet of each other. Talk about taking each other's wa, water.
But everyone still has to meet the general requirements of DEM.
It's 100-foot well from septic.
Right, so all of that separation still exists.
And the other question I have is, there's already, I just think this is extreme, and I think if we're going to have a meeting like this in the future, it should be a special meeting just for this. It shouldn't be a council meeting that we start this whole discussion at 8:30 or 8:15, whatever time it was. This is a big deal for a lot of people. A lot of people have plans to subdivide land in the future, and this going from two acres to three acres is a huge deal, and it's even more of a deal in an R60 zone. You talk about the R60, where, where does the R60 exist anymore? Is there any R60 left in the town? Because you still talk about multifamily homes and duplexes in R60, but I don't see any R60 on the map. So all of R60 is going to 120. So I have paperwork here I'd like to pass out to the council, because I want to show them a lot that I have on the corner of Glendale and Stafford Road that I've been trying to approve since January, I submitted plans. With approved septic designs, with everything that was required, I've been waiting six months and I still don't have preliminary approval. I've been in that office probably 20 times, I spoke in Ed about 20 times, and there is, there is no reason why, they're not giving me any reason why I don't have preliminary approval on two house lots on four and a half acres of land. So I'd like to pass this out, because under your zoning now, I'll pass one to you guys, I'm sure you're aware of it. Yeah.
Is that to do with the moratorium, though?
No, no, it's two lots. It's the old Glendales, Glenmars.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Okay, four, four and a half acres, I have 400 feet on Glendale and 400 feet on Stafford Road.
We're, we're way off topic.
No, we're not, because now under your new regulations, that would become one single family home. That's, that to me, who wants four and a half acres for one home? Now, when you look at that property, the aerial on that property, that makes up at least seven or eight lots. So now under the new zoning, your new zoning that would go, that would be one single family home. I cannot put duplexes there, I would not be able to subdivide. I'm vested because I put in my application, but I wouldn't be vested anymore, and that would be one single family home. That's extreme. Nobody wants more than one acre of land, and you're right about the conservation plan, about people, it's more valuable, because people don't want big lots anymore. So when you go to three acres, all you're going to have is people from New York and Boston coming in, building four, 5,000 square foot houses, and people that were born and raised here are not going to be able to live here. I build houses for a living, I develop property, I sell houses, I know what sells and what doesn't sell, and that's what people want now. They do not want big houses anymore. Trust me when I say that. We have enough restrictions in place. The other thing people have to realize is suitable land and unsuitable land. When you say three acre minimum, that's suitable land. There's already restrictions in place for unsuitable land. Unsuitable land is not just a wetland, unsuitable land is the buffer of the wetland. And when you're in a non-quiet watershed area, any tributary to the non-quiet watershed is 200-foot buffer. So you lose all that property. So it's almost, you're basically stopping all development in town, that's what this is all about. And, and you can say what you want, but that's what it comes down to. No developer is going to develop any property, the only houses that are going to be built is on ground. The only houses that are going to be built is on grandfathered lots, that's it. No developer is going to spend money on putting in a road or anything. Now, somebody, I think it was Patricia Hilton, it's nothing personal Patricia, I don't know you personally, but in front of the council, a month or two ago, they asked you how big of a difference this was, and you said, well, say somebody has 17 lots, they would now go down to 14. And in R80, if you had 17 lots, that's 34 acres, you would go down to 11. And in R60, if you have 17 lots, you would go down to eight lots. That's how extreme this is. So all I'm saying is this needs a lot more discussion, and as a taxpayer in the town, the town is going to get sued by every developer who's purchased property who plans on developing. So at a minimum, you should give people at least two years to go in front of the board with a plan before this changes to R120.
Yes.
Name and address.
My address is 83 Captain Circle. I live on a 75...
Name your name.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, you said my address. So my name is Peter Monis, 83 Captain Circle. I live on a small lot, such as under an acre, and nobody can see me because due to the landscaping, I live in the woods. Now, I've got a question about conservative development. While I was driving up here, I missed some of the presentation. Where is conservative development allowed? What zone? Just the R120?
Conservation development would be in all residential zoning districts.
So 120?
Yes.
Yes.
In all, all the residential zoning districts in town.
The whole town.
For four lots or more.
Yes, of course, 120 is a big lot. So it's allowed throughout the town, basically. Now, to me, you're stabbing yourself in the back here because you're crying about water, Stu, you're saying the danger of water, lack of water, and just recently, he mentioned that you're moving all these houses in a compound area, complex area, together, a gathering, instead of spreading it out over the whole property. Of course, he's talking about sewage systems, yes, that's a problem, but now over here, when you use, you have, let's say, a lot with 34, a lot, houses, units, now you've got a big demand for water in a small area. Basically, the conservation area development should have public water and sewage before it's allowed. So you won't have this problem. You're stabbing yourself in the back here. Yes, you are, because you don't know what the future area of climate changes, droughts. If the wells go dry in a certain area with this development, where are they going to get the water? You'll be in a bind. I didn't see the rest of the presentation of the other conservation requirements, but there are, I read the whole, the whole thing over, and there are some problems there, especially about ownership, open space, how are you going to get, who's going to be the owner, homeowners, homeowners associations. It's still a big problem, and I don't know if you discussed that here tonight or not, but you should discuss that before you vote on anything in the public. So I recommend that water and sewage be required for conservation development.
Thank you.
Fred Souza, 51 King Road. I own a 14 acre parcel that I bought seven years ago. I, um, I appreciate the work that this board does. I sat through many meetings. I understand this concern for natural resources, development and growth and stress on this town. I understand that. But I also sacrificed and I gave up. I sold a perfectly good home that was very comfortable and well finished. I've scratched, I've worked, I've sacrificed to have these 14 acres. That was my retirement, that was my plan, okay? This is what's going on, is the fact that it is difficult to get through the board. It is difficult to go through zoning, it is difficult to go through the planning board. I recently developed a piece of property that was substandard. It took 455 days, documented days, to get approval to build a single family home. I had the septic, I had a water source, I had a survey, I had my work completed. 455 days. It's ridiculous what it takes to get stuff done. Now, you're going to take my 14 acres, which should be basically seven lots, and you're going to reduce it to four. It's going to take one lot to pay for the road to put it in, it's going to take another lot to develop the houses. What am I left with? If I were to develop it for strictly a financial gain, it's a minimum loss of $450,000. If I built it out, it's a minimum loss of $1.8 million, it's $600,000 a house. If I wanted to give it to my girlfriend's children, which there are three, there's nothing left for me to retire on. I gave it up seven years ago to have this because it was an investment in my future to live in this town, to stay here. I've been here my entire life. I grew up on a farm here. You're taking it away from us. You're making it so we can't stay. You're making it so that we're gagged, bound. The last lawyer cost me $17,000 to argue what was my right, what was my right to build. 17 grand. I should have came to the planning board and zoning board and it should have been automatic. The scenario for a substandard lot should be automatic, it should be on the tip of your tongue. These boards are not here to help us. They are prohibitive. Poor Ashley, she works her butt off. She's here part-time. We don't have a planner, we don't have an assistant planner, and we walk into that office, who knows when you're going to get a call back? We're, we're in the weeds, we are in the weeds. Officer Brooks saying we're 85% capacity at the water. Why aren't we talking about what it's going to take to, to upgrade? That should, that should be part of the plan. We can't hide, we can't stop development. You've got Souza Road with 300 houses, and you're taking it out on me. I've been here my whole life. You bust my hump, you bust my hump because I want to move a house. Won't fit, won't fit. Zoning officer refused to do the calculations that are written in your ordinance, refused to do it. Absolutely refused to do it. I'm disgusted with this town. I wanted to stay here. I'm ready to go.
Thank you. Okay, I, I don't see anybody else.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Please state your name and address.
Mark Demello, 395 Park Avenue. We're working on a, as you probably already know, conceptual plan we already submitted to the planning board for a planned retirement community, 55 and over. By changing this zone, we go from 120 units down to, which I could be wrong on, down to 10 to 12 units. Okay, you're going to have to show me why. The, or we talked about it afterwards. So it just makes you wonder, you know, when you, then you look at an R30 zone, you're going to do 40,000 square feet, you can have three units off a well and a septic system. So that's every 13,333 square feet. If you take, now on my project, they're giving you a bonus, a bonus density at 100% at eight a unit, eight units per acre on a well and a septic system, rail and housing paperwork.
Mr. Demello, you're talking about a comprehensive permit project?
Well, I'm talking about, this one, no, planned retirement community was going to be in condos, I think we're looking at, and we had the conceptual one we already came in on. So we already spent $100,000 on that. They get the, the buffers done, get the survey done, per test done. So now, I'm going to go from only, from 120 units down to 10 to 12. Okay, I could be wrong, that's why I'm here asking the question.
I mean, it's not in front of me, but that, that math is accurate?
At all.
Well, it's R20 to, it's R60 to R120.
Okay.
What you're proposing.
I mean, just, just straight math would, would be half.
Okay, but now, the difference is with the multifamily zone is gone. On R60, it was multifamily right now.
Okay.
So you add all the multi, all the...
So again, it's not in front of me, so I, I have to see specifically that.
Right, with R60, every 10,000 square feet, you get an extra unit. Now, I don't even have that. And it's a planned retirement community, 55 and over, no kids going through the school system, there is no, I don't see, and then nobody even addressed the question of, whatever we do have water and we're on a septic. Everything's always says public water and public sewer, or just well and septic. So nobody ever addressed the opposite of that, saying if you have water, what is that? Are you okay? Where's your, what's your numbers? Say in North Tivon. That's my question. I really don't know, I just, I'm just thinking it's a, I don't think it's fair for that, for the retirement community to be just wasted $100,000 and down to, even half is even a crazy number. Well, then I guess my question is, is that fair?
It's fair enough.
R60?
It may not be correct.
Well, I mean, right now, if I'm using the numbers that I thought I read off the paperwork, it's R60, every 10,000 square feet gives us 120 units. Now I'm down to 10 to 12 units. Off multifamily zone. Well, I think it is. But it's going to be too late, isn't it?
Major point that you made.
Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate all the work.
Mrs. Smith, can you just hold on one second? Mr. Chairman, so I just want to remind the public that you're having a public hearing on your proposal, which is a recommendation to the town council. Once you make your recommendation to the town council, then this council is going to open up another public hearing the same, at the same time, after you guys are done, and we will, we will probably, we will, we have to take public comment on the actual ordinances before us. So, right now, the planning board is just waiting to get information from a recommendation. I, I'm assuming that a lot of the comments that are already made are probably duplicative and were probably, people are probably, but I just want to understand the process. They're only making a recommendation, this board is the only board that can actually change zoning code, so that's what we're doing.
They, they will consider what we say now?
Of course, of course.
Or should I wait till later?
No, no, of course, no. I just want, I don't want people to get confused and say, oh, we're going to have another, we are having more public hearing after this because the planning board, this is their recommendation to us, they worked on this, this is their plan, it's now, will be up to the town council now to determine whether or not it's going to be approved or not.
And will that, will that happen this evening?
It's on the agenda to happen. Whether it happens, that's up to this board, whether they vote on it or not tonight.
I'll be brief and I'll try not to repeat.
That's fine, I just want to, I just want to clarify what's happening so people don't know. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Again, I, I recognize that an awful lot of work has been put into this. I just had a couple of, couple of thoughts that I wanted to bring out. Many of the towns that I deal with, they have a restriction on the number of bedrooms per acre. You know, the, the concern seems to be water quality and water quantity and how, how best to protect that. By limiting the, not increasing the lot size, but restricting the number of pollutant sources, bedrooms or, or, or other units per acre would, would be another way that you could accomplish this without taking people's rights away to be able to, to develop their property. The, also, a lot of towns require that there be advanced treatment systems, septic systems in those areas that are of critical concern. That's another option to, to provide some pollutant removals, again, as opposed to the, the density change. I, I've seen some, the slideshow that, that presented the other towns in the state that had greater than the 80,000 square foot zoning, but I didn't really see anything that, that provided the science that says that 120,000 square feet is the magic number, you know, and, and is, as LJ had indicated, is that total acreage or is that suitable acreage? If you keep, if you consider the wetlands, they're, they're a great source for pollutant removal, for infiltration. Again, just, just concerned that the, the increase in density is going to, going to hurt a lot of folks. The, also, the fact that there was a moratorium that prohibited anybody from, from actually going forward with the project until the zoning change takes place seems like it's a little bit unfair to, to many of the people in the town. Thank you very much.
So two mechanisms were put out there as options to, you know, alternative options just now. I, you know, I would want to verify this for sure, but I, I believe that the town, we can't regulate over DEM in terms of requirements for septic systems and wetlands, so I don't think the town could require denitrification systems over DEMs, whatever they permit is what they permit. They permit septic systems, the town does not have the ability to permit OWTS or regulate that. The recommendation on the, the reduction or managing the number of bedrooms per acre with, you know, recent changes to state law enabling legislation for zoning and subdivision, I don't believe there's any mechanism where you could regulate by bedroom, number of bedrooms So I just wanted to add that to that conversation.
Thank you, Ashley. And, yes, sir.
I'll be real quick. Tom Snell, 245 King Road. Ma'am, earlier when you were showing that map up there and that the...
Speak into it, please speak into it.
Adamsville Brook, Patchett Brook, Borden Brook, Sinin Flesh, I love trout fish over there. And my water on King Road comes out of the basket swamp, and right now it's under stand, it's under standards according to the DEM. So if we continued without a moratorium, if you continue to build without doing something, the water's only going to get worse. Am I correct? And so at least this is a stopgap measure. So we go forward because I don't care how much building we do, somebody's going to get sick if the water isn't done right. If something, we don't do something about the water. So this, this, but by doing this, we, we are going to at least, it doesn't fix what we already have, but it keeps it from getting worse. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I, I see no further members of the public. I would, we have a motion, we have a second, we have had our discussion. Again, this is to approve a recommendation to town council on amendments to, to the comprehensive plan text and maps.
Mr. Hardy, you need to close your public hearing.
But we have to have this motion...
You can close the public hearing.
Public hearing and then a vote.
Oh, okay. So I, so do you, would you like a motion to close the public hearing? I just, okay, just, then I close the public hearing. Now, a motion, so I'm, I'm calling the question on the motion that is before you. So those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And now, I think I need a motion to adjourn. So would somebody... We're, we're adjourning the planning board.
Yes.
Hearing.
Close.
Okay.
Motion, seven, no.
But now we, we are adjourning our own meeting.
Yes.
So, a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Bill Gerlach, a second, to those in favor. Okay, we are adjourned. Bill Gerlach, a second. Those in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.
I do want to thank the planning board for all their work. It was recognized by the audience, but thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chair, I...
I'm gonna do K, which bit, that's what I'm gonna do. Approval of the proposed amendment in the Tiverton Town zoning ordinance. Revisions are proposed to zoning ordinance two definitions to Article five, district dimensional regulations, sections one, two, and three, and to adopt Article twenty-six, conservation development project. Is that all right?
Yes, that's item K on the agenda, and you're gonna open the public hearing if there are other comments on this. This is the conservation district that was talked about earlier.
Well, this is, yeah, this is the conservation. I'll open the public hearing. We did hear all the comments, keep that in mind, and we also, so, go ahead. Are you gonna repeat what you said to the planning board?
I don't have to repeat, but I was wondering if the planning board administrator could cover the conservation amendment, the new amendment for development.
She did.
She did? Okay. Was there a discussion about ownership of the open space? To me, you're adding a big bag of worms here, because it's up in the air. It's not very clear. And what about the problem of the state of Rhode Island passing laws for accessory dwelling units? How big an effect will this have on a development like that?
So, sir, on the ownership of the land, so as was testified to, the fifty percent of the land has to be designated as open space, as proposed by the planning board, the, at fifty percent of the land, that open spaceland either must be conveyed either to the town upon acceptance by a majority voter of the town council, or a nonprofit organization as approved by the planning board, whose principal purpose is open space or resource protection. Those are the two options that the planning board indicated, and as stated in this ordinance. There are other options in state law that the planning board did not recommend.
So it becomes iffy.
Well, it's not iffy, it's that you have those two options.
They have two choices, two options, and how will they feel that day? They'll go that way, blah, blah, blah. And there's one item I read about ownership, about the homeowners association might own it too. I have to go over that whole list again, which I should have brought my computer with me, because I don't have it in front of me.
So I just want to make clear, there's nothing in the current ordinance as proposed that would allow the land to be owned, fifty percent land of that open spaceland to be owned by a homeowners association. The two options are owned by the town or a nonprofit group.
Then it's, again, it's an oddball situation of if, so, if not, maybe so, homeowner associations. It should be directly worded that this type of development will have to have a homeowner association to maintain other problems in the development, such as water runoff. When you have a retention pond, you want the town to maintain that? Does the town own the roads, or is it gonna be private roads? You don't state that in your ordinance.
The town always, would always own the roads.
Yeah, that doesn't change.
That doesn't change.
None of that changes.
This is a new development.
Yeah, but it's still a public road. It's gotta be, when it becomes accepted by the planning board, when the plan is submitted to the planning board... Hold on, let me finish.
Yes, I want to go on.
So when the plan, if a plan, assuming this is adopted, if the plan is set to the planning board, it'll show the roadways, and those roadways will be accepted by the town, and it will become public streets unless otherwise...
Peter, just like it is now.
Yes, I know. I was on the planning board.
I know you were.
I'm saying, is there an option for private roads in this type of development?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the town won't accept that road?
It's the same. It's the same now.
It's the same as it is now.
The developer has the option of making it a public road or a private road.
Well, that's what I want to see in black and white.
It's already in black and white, it's current ordinance. This ordinance doesn't change that.
It doesn't change that.
This is a new ordinance.
Yes. It only, it only changes the, it only changes the conservation portion of it. All the road ownership, all those other issues are currently...
Okay, so, there's an option there, or you can go either way you're seeing. Fine, good. But access to the property, open space, how are you gonna get there to the public? Does the public able to get there? Is it gonna be private? Is this the same as in the past? Is it written down how they're gonna handle this?
Well, again, the two...
Can I go camping on a conservation development area for a week?
So the...
The open space area?
You can't right now. You can't now.
If you read the statement, I was, I read it wrong, which that's happens. You know, you could have an opportunity for public access to the property. You can walk the trails, doing this and that.
It doesn't say that at all.
It does not say that.
And I'll stand, I'll stand down.
Thank you, Mr. Penrice.
Anyone else? We're talking about the conservation.
Sorry, can I just mention one more thing?
What's the...
Does this cover the ADU like I mentioned before?
No, that's state law.
So, this is a problem here too. If you have twenty-four units approved, can somebody come in and add another couple more units?
That's theoretical. ADU has to do with using existing lots and using the different buildings on those lots for ADUs. It has nothing to do with this. So if a house has a garage, right?
Yes.
Then, under state law, which the zoning board can't, the zoning ordinance has to follow state law, you would, under current law, as proposed, it hasn't been signed by the government yet, someone could go in and make that garage an apartment, without any type of approval by the town.
And you, they're trying to push ADU separate from the building, too.
Yes.
So...
But that's state law, sir.
This is a danger in the future. I'm just trying to mention it to you guys.
But just so I'm clear, we are bound by state law. If the state law, general assembly says you must allow this, then we have to allow it. There is no, there's no option.
Which is a bad mistake. Thank you.
A lot of people would agree with you.
Joan Chabot, nineteen Yellowfin Road. Here as a resident, not as the town clerk. I have just one question. It revolves around the fifty percent open space on the conservation district, or development. So, you say the fifty percent is open space, and it can be owned by either the town or a nonprofit. And it could not be owned, the way it's written today, by the homeowners association.
That's not an option, correct?
So what that means is, to the taxpayers of this town, all of that land is now not taxable. So it impacts the taxes of this town.
Well, if it's owned by a nonprofit, doesn't mean it's be tax exempt. But if it's owned by the town, it would be tax exempt.
If it's, if it's a nonprofit, it's most likely gonna be the national land trust, and it will be non-taxable.
Madam Chair, may I just answer that? As the solicitor said, you know, if an entity such as a land trust or owned it, but even if the homeowners association, even if a homeowners association was to own it, in all likelihood, if it would qualify, they would probably apply to the state for farm, forest, and open space, because that would just be the smart thing to do from a tax point of view, because it was set aside as open space, which means it would be taxed at the farm, forest, and open space rate, which as we know is quite small compared to the regular tax rate.
Anyone else? On this subject? No? I'll close the, I'll close the public hearing.
On K, right? On item K.
On item K. Council Burke?
I don't want to lose that train of thought on who can own, manage that piece of open space in the conservation development district. There are, we have a memo, a legal memo from the solicitor, that there are other ways to address that, permitted in state law, one being the homeowners association.
Well, then it'd be held in private, continue to be, you have a private, doesn't say homeowners association.
Okay, okay. So can you explain what those other options are?
Yeah, so the other options under state law is, let me just read them all. Be conveyed to the city or town and accepted by it for a park, open space, agriculture, or other specified use or uses. Be conveyed to a nonprofit organization, the principal purpose of which is the conservation of open space or resource protection. The third option is to be conveyed to a corporation or trust owned, or to be owned by the owners of the lots or units within the development, or owners of shares within a cooperative development. If such a corporation or trust is used, ownership shall pass with the conveyance of the lots or units. And last option is remain in private ownership if the use is limited to agriculture, habitat, or forestry, and the city or town has set forth in its community comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance that private ownership is necessary for the preservation and the management of the agricultural habitat or forest resources. So those are the three options that you, as the town council, have as a matter of law. Other than those four options, there are no other options as to how to hold that land.
So if I may, I'm not sure, Madam President, if I may ask either Trish or Stu to identify the thought process behind not including those other options?
I really don't recall why we didn't include those other options. And I'm inclined to think that we might want to rethink, rethink that process again. Because then that would allow, you know, that would, you know, that would allow, you know, more, a greater variety of ways to handle that open space. Tricia, did you have anything you'd like to add to that? Tricia says she has a better memory than I do.
Tonight, maybe. Maybe not tomorrow. When we discussed this, the one thing about a homeowners association is that it does present a little bit more of a challenge for the town in terms of enforcement, because over time, people kind of forget that this is supposed to be protected open space, and, you know, at some point, somebody's got an idea that we're gonna put a community tennis court in there, or we're gonna, you know... So, if the purpose of, if the primary purpose for open space, when you do a conservation development, and you're talking about setting aside the most important land, right, in any given town, it could be different. For us, right, it's the groundwater recharge area. That's gonna be the top environmental priority. That means the best thing that we can do is leave it in its natural vegetative state, because that flora and fauna takes up, you know, a lot of the bad stuff that comes out of septic leachate. So it's a bit of an enforcement challenge for the town, over time, that these open spaces in these homeowners associations stay there. That was one thing. The other thing was, we were also not necessarily wanting to put the burden of a homeowners association on a development if this was the only reason they would need one. You don't, if, if a development is done with public roads that are done to town standards, and the town accepts the roads, and especially in a conservation development, because you can use the open space for your stormwater management. So, if the only reason to have to have an HOA was to have ownership of this open space, then that was, you know, creating something, not everybody wants to live in a neighborhood with an HOA. We thought it might be a little bit of an impediment. But those were the two reasons. But again, I mean, I don't think that this is a, this particular item is a super make or break deal. Just might be a little more enforcement in the long run of keeping an eye on the open space.
It would be the same amount of homes.
Pardon?
It would be, it wouldn't affect the amount of homes.
The number of homes?
The number of homes.
No, not at all.
No, that's the reason why I'm asking. Go ahead.
Be the same.
So... Sorry, I lost my train. Yeah.
So, in the ordinance as proposed by the planning board, it's limited to open space. The statute allows for park, open space, agriculture, or other specified use or uses. So this would only be allowed for open space. This fifty percent land. The statute, if it's conveyed to the city or town, it can accept it for a park, open space, agriculture, or other specified use or uses. The ordinance has written, says it could only be accepted for use for open space. You eliminated for a park, agriculture, or others by specified uses. Okay. There's even a little bit more leeway. For instance, if they said this open space could be used for a park for the people who live in that neighborhood, then that would be allowed under the statute, but not allowed under our ordinance.
But would it be just for the people who live in that neighborhood?
If they, depends, well, no, it would be owned by the town, right.
Right.
So then, again, the idea was, if the priority is of conservation development, is to protect the groundwater and have groundwater recharge areas, then what you don't want to do is cut down all the trees and all the shrubs and all of that, because that's what really helps with it. However, what is in there is that whether the town or a third party, an independent entity owns it, that they would be charged with developing a conservation management plan. So you would either have the town's open space commission, or something like the land trust or the nature conservancy, developing the management plan for this. And if they felt as though that they could reasonably allow some passive recreation, then that's okay. Understanding that the highest priority is to keep it as a groundwater recharge area and a place to deal with stormwater in the neighborhood.
How many communities is this an option? I know that there's communities that have this, but are there communities that the developer can either do it as an option? So if the developer didn't want to do a conservation, in the other communities, would that be allowed?
Well, first of all, let me say this. If the developer does not want to do a conservation development process, they can apply to the planning board to go as a conventional development, and there are standards proposed in the ordinance for them to do that. That's issue number one.
But the planning board would decide whether...
Correct. And if it's in the best interest of the town. If you give me a second, I'll actually find the language for you.
Unless a developer can prove to the satisfaction of the planning board that a conventional subdivision will serve the best interests of the town, and such conventional subdivision is found to be consistent with the intent and purposes of these regulations, is not based on economic considerations, and will provide the best site layout and design. For single-family home developments without public water sewer, a developer seeking to exempt the project from the conservation and development requirements must also show that the conformance with Rhode Island DEM requirements for septic system would yield, and this says less, I think it should say fewer, fewer units than a conventional development. So that's the standard that the planning board, if a developer came to the planning board, says, right now, it's mandatory for four lots or over, as currently written. If a developer says, you know what, this doesn't work because I can't, because I can't meet these requirements, they have a right to put it on a case before the planning board. If they meet the standards, the planning board would have to grant those, that option to go to the conventional development. But that's, again, it's up to the planning board. It's not automatic.
And then I think you... Then the second part of your question, I believe, was, is this, what other communities mandate this? And I looked at, I'm gonna say about twenty-one communities, there are three which require it in all residential zones. That's Cumberland, Gloucester, Richmond. Whether it's a major or minor land development project, it's required in Gloucester and Richmond. And then it's mandatory in some residential zones in four other communities, those being Bristol, Charlestown, Smithfield, and West Greenwich. And again, in each of those, it would be required both major and minor land development projects in some residential zones.
Which is just so the board knows, what's the cutoff number? So a minor development under current law is nine, nine or less, and a major is ten or more.
Correct.
So it's triggered. But that's what, that's what the law is now. Yes, good point.
I want to make a point that when those ordinances were developed, the trigger was six. The state law raised the trigger between minor and major up to ten. We don't know if these municipalities are then gonna go back into their conservation development and then lower that trigger again, and not use the minor-major dividing line, but instead actually say... but instead actually say six lots to bring it back to where it was.
So that's a fair statement. So the state law changed the definition of major versus minor. Because their ordinance references major versus minor, they're going back to state law, so it's a lower, it's a higher threshold now than it was before.
But again, six of the seven that require it is major or minor land development, so it doesn't matter what the number is.
Thank you.
Do I have a clarification?
No, I closed, because I closed the, I closed the public hearing, Peter.
Can you have some courtesy?
Well, I don't think I'm being moved.
This is a court of the town, and the developer, and the residents of this town. A simple question. Planning board, can I do it, please?
I don't think you should, Peter, no. I closed the public hearing.
I know you did.
Okay, and that's, that's...
This is, oh, you're not very democratic.
Of course I am.
No, you're not. Because...
Let him ask the question. By the time we get to the end of this, we could have asked the question.
Yeah, I'm arguing the question would be already done.
If I can answer the question, Mr. Wayne, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Planning board decides on the...
Go to the microphone, Peter, so people can hear you.
There's a question about conventional or conservation development. Developer says, "Okay, I can't do it." Where does he go to repeal? Through the town council?
No, 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 no.
Through the regular town courts?
No, it's ordinance, it's an ordinance. He has the option to prove to the planning board that he can't do it, or he or she, I should say.
We've got that point.
Okay? And then if it's denied by the planning board, yes, it's appealed to the superior court, but...
Okay, that's the answer I want. Simple. Thank you.
And if I may, Madam President, I think that's an important point that sometimes is lost, is that, you know, folks bring up all the developments that are going on in Fish Road, the Seasons, the crematorium. Town council has no legal role in that process. Our legal role is tonight, to address these proposed amendments to the zoning in the comprehensive plan. When those are in place, we don't have a role in that. Any town council, no town council, this one, past one's future, have a role in determining what a developer can and cannot do. That's up to the planning board and zoning.
Any other questions from the council? No questions? So do you want me to do a vote on that one?
It's up to you. I mean, so the ordinance is before you, the public hearing is now closed, you've got the recommendation from the planning board. Council can, has two options. They could amend it, they could pass it as written, or they could table it for further discussion for another day. Recognizing the fact that the moratorium that's in place expires on June 30th.
I don't think so. We don't, we don't have to do anything with Jay. Councilor just asked me, and I thought you...
Jay, yes, Jay, once we get through this, we'll go back to Jay.
Oh, once we get through this?
Because if you pass this, then the comprehensive plan has to match the zoning changes. So that's why we're waiting to go back to Jay.
Make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Town zoning ordinance revisions to zoning ordinance Article II, definitions to Article V, district dimensional regulations, Sections 1, 2, and 3, and to adopt Article 26, conservation development projects.
I set forth in...
As set forth in JK on the agenda.
Could be 7K, excuse me.
7K on the agenda. And added to that motion is that we request that the planning board go back and talk further about the open space, how that can be managed.
Can we, all right?
That's just a request.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
So you're making a motion to pass it, but to change it?
Yes.
Correct?
No, I'm making a motion to approve what's before us, and then requesting that the planning board also go back and have a further conversation about that piece that was under discussion just recently.
Mike, our deadline is June 30th?
The moratorium expires on June 30th. It's not a change, it's a recommendation that the planning board consider adding two other options. He's not making, he's not changing, and he's asking them to recommend it.
No, wait a minute. I don't think you're understanding. That's what I, I just, I'm thinking, why don't we just change it?
You could, if you wanted to. You can just add those two categories of uses, of ownership. You might want to wait for a recommendation of the planning board, but that's up to you.
Do we have to?
You don't have to, well, you can.
We can't table this, you know? We have to do this this week.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, yes, we do.
Our moratorium runs out on July 1st. So those, so the many residents in town who have expressed concerns about the big developments on Fish Road, guess what? If we don't do something by July 1, those, there can be additional ones under the current rules. And if those plans get before the planning board in the right manner, anything we do today, or not do today, doesn't matter.
But taking all the value...
I know the people in this room do not agree with this, but the many people that have spoke to us do.
Some of them were here.
Some of them were here. Some of them spoke.
Some of them are still here.
Some of them are still here.
And you can amend it later with the addition. You can pass it now.
All right. All right, everyone stop for a moment. That's right. So, Mike made a motion, and you'd like the planning board to review it.
To review just that piece?
Just that piece.
Just that piece.
Jay, you second it. I'm going to call for a vote.
So the, before we vote, so the motion is as written, per recommendation of the planning board, but just that piece of that, that extra land.
Everyone needs to stop. Go ahead.
You know what? I'm going to make it cleaner.
Make it cleaner.
I'm going to withdraw that motion. I'm going to do an easy one first, that we approve the proposed amendments, as recommended by the planning board, to the Tiverton Town zoning ordinance, for revisions to zoning ordinance Article II, definitions to Article V, district dimensional regulations, Section 1, 2, and 3, and to adopt Article 26, conservation development projects as outlined in Item 7K on the agenda. That's the motion.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? David, you want to ask a question?
It's not touching that piece at all.
When will that be addressed?
My next motion was going to be to recommend that the planning board come back to us with, after they have further discussion about it.
We have been inundated with building and development in this town, and we need to do it smarter. We need development to be smarter. We only have one time to get this right. The moratorium ends next week. We need to make it smarter and more planned and...
But we have, we have had time. We had a presentation about a month ago, and some of us have been paying attention and reading it. So we, I feel I'm well acquainted that this wasn't a hidden subject. They had public hearings, they had all kinds of things. So this isn't like, this is the first time we've all heard this.
It's been discussed in the zoning review committee, it's been discussed at the planning board for six months.
Yes.
Minimum.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. Fred, stop. All right. All right, so the motions remain in second. All those in favor?
What a railroad.
Okay. Al.
Yeah, I made the second motion.
Yeah. Second motion.
I move to...
It sounds like there's some other residents in town.
Alan, actually, we did our homework. We did our homework. We paid attention all along the way.
No, it wasn't Alan that said it.
No, it wasn't Alan, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alan. I apologize. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to request that the planning board revisit the section...
Please step outside if you're going to talk.
I move that we ask, request that the planning board review and discuss further the section around who, how the open space is managed, and come back to us with their input and any recommendations that they may have, and there may be none, but...
Do I have a second? Motion's second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Al, approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Town zoning map and zoning ordinance. Any, I'd like to open this to the public.
Yep. This is the elimination of the R6, RD zone.
Any comments? Now Alan's going to talk.
Alan, I do apologize.
You were doing a little ventriloquism there.
That's all right. Really, I can appreciate the presentation done here tonight. It was a really good job, and I appreciate everybody who's a public servant's work. Trust me, you don't get paid, you do crazy hours and all that. The timing of this isn't very good. We were up against a hard stop, and we presented something a week before. Usually, I mean, well, publicly at least. And so there's a lot of people that would probably, who have a lot of experience in these fields, such as the various things as water and various other things, that this is the first times they're actually publicly hearing a lot about this. So regardless of the meetings that have happened before, this is a big step, from what I'm hearing. We're hearing people coming forward who said that they're waiting on simple permits for 300 days, 400 days, whatever it is. But, and that seems to be a common thread throughout most of the testimony here tonight. But this is kind of fast, and I know you're up against a hard stop, so I would just urge you to maybe table it, or think a little bit further on it, or maybe spend some time having some more testimony from people, that some of the people that work in the field here, that might have something to say about it, maybe personal testimony? That's all I had to say. I wasn't here to cause...
Yeah, I don't think this was a surprise. We put a moratorium on in June, in January, and we explained to everybody why. And it was very publicly at the town council meeting. And we did say that the planning board was, will be working on this. So this was not hidden. People could have went to any, any of the planning board meetings, they, they could have given them recommendations, speak to them. I had a town council meeting about a month ago, where we had the same presentation, even more detailed, and it was on the agenda. I know people knew about it, because I was getting phone calls, people complaining. Some of the people that were in this room tonight.
And the town also sent individual notice to each property owner who might be affected by this. So they got actual notice.
This all started in January, when trees were being cut down, land was, and all these proposed housing units were, and people asked us to do this. And it was very public, there was letters about it to the editor, and I don't understand why everybody's so surprised by this.
It seems like the water seems to be the real major factor we have here. We've had so many little, so little talk about, I live in Stonebridge, two days, three days a week, we have brown water. At least, once a month, there's a truck in either front of my house or on that street fixing a pipe that collapsed. And so I understand it. So I think maybe focusing a little bit more on the problem, I mean, we have solar panel farms going up everywhere, that's more impactful, I think, of the water runoff than just knocking down trees for a couple of houses.
And so one of the things, one of the things we have done, and this is, it came up last fall, we had some, the best information at that point that we had around our water challenge. And so we went out and have that hydrological study, at least with the two water districts. Because we don't know exactly what the big problem is, but the challenge is, and this, I want folks to know this, we don't have any control over the water. The town does not control the water. It's the two water districts that control the public water authorities. So it's those districts, and they all have their own voting membership. You are a voting member of Stonebridge, they have the boards of directors. That's where the focus really needs to be. I mean, we want them to improve their capacity and their infrastructure.
You did make a salient point, though, tonight, that after you make this vote, you have nothing further to do with it. It's the planning board and the zoning. Now, the zoning has been totally upended in the state, as you well know. It's just absolutely crazy. Everything starts at Superior Court. If you have a problem with your house, and you have a problem with zoning, it starts at a $50,000 lawyer, just to go to Superior Court. There are no public hearings anymore in these events. Your First Amendment rights to address grievances against the government are gone. You don't have the right to public hearings anymore. It starts at the Superior Court. So this is your last chance. That's why I'm here mentioning it. This is your last chance.
As a lawyer, I don't think that's accurate. You still have to go before the zoning board and get an application.
Right.
And there's a public hearing, people are noticed, that didn't change at all.
No, no, but even if they agree with you, but even if they agree with you, say you're a developer, and you want to put up something, and they want affordable housing there, and the town says no, the planning board says no, zoning board says no. Look at Benton Court Farms, right now in Warren, they're at the Superior Court right now. They want to put a four-story tall, 120-unit in a little tiny stamp.
Because they're appealing a decision that was made by those boards, but yes.
Yeah, yeah. And now they're being forced into Superior Court.
But they always have that right to appeal, even if you're in a butter or not, so that...
But what I'm saying is...
The process hasn't changed.
Yeah, I don't want to drag it. I'm just saying that I'm asking you to think this through very quickly, because this is your last chance. And if you find out something wasn't correct, or maybe there's some issues, we're all going to suffer. That's it. Thank you. Oh, okay.
Never mind.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Never mind. All right, so...
Madam President? These are both text amendments, as well as map amendments.
Oh, yeah, still have a public hearing.
I still have the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just...
I don't want to, David Rickert B., 68, Per Lane, I don't want to repeat what I said before, but I do want to repeat that this is not your last chance. The point is that you guys are here as a bulk work, setting up the rules, then everything that we, I am a lawyer, I'm not a land use lawyer, all the little details we heard tonight, those are all, those are not appropriate for right now. Those are appropriate for before the zoning board, or before the planning commission. And if there are, if they are underfunded and things are taking 400 days, that is a separate problem that we need to look at. This is about having a plan for the town, and you can and should be continually adjusting that and tweaking that against all the development that's coming in. And frankly, after what I've seen tonight, I trust that you will do that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Ashley, a lot of these, if these applications came in after January 1st, there was a moratorium, correct? Like, some of these people are saying that they put applications in, and they've been waiting, but there was a moratorium on...
There has been a moratorium since January 1, or January-ish, for the applications of four units or more. There have been several mentions of these projects that are, you know, have been languishing and not moving forward, and, you know, 400-something days. And the other side of it is that they've been deemed incomplete, or they didn't submit something that goes with it, or they had a condition of approval, and then they decided not to do that condition of approval, and haven't finished doing the amendment to remove the condition of approval. So there's always a second side to that story of those applications that have sat there or not moved, or, you know, have been, you know, trying to get permitted. You know, I've been here two years, you know, we try to efficiently move things as quickly as possible. We're also stuck with state mandated time clocks, so we can't just sit on applications and do nothing, and make people wait for no reason, and not give answers, and like, we just don't have the ability to do that. They get automatic approvals if we try to do those things. So I just remind everyone that there's always two sides to every story, and that the planning department attempts, and the planning board always attempts to move applications. That's been my experience for the two years that I've been here. Will continue to do that, and, you know, move things forward in a timely fashion as much as possible. But we're only responsible for responding to what we receive, and when we don't receive complete applications, or people change their mind in the middle of a process and decide that they're not going to do what they said they were, and then they don't, we don't get updated plans, that slows things down.
And anyone who submitted an application after January 1st, there was a moratorium, so...
So anything that came after that moratorium took effect, we didn't even accept any applications that were for four more... applications that were for four more, four units or more.
I guess that was my question.
We refused them because we, once I accept something into the office, we're responsible for responding, and those time clocks start ticking. So, because the moratorium is in place, we're not accept, we can't accept those applications.
So, anyone that brought an application in, and it wasn't accepted, they were, they were aware that there were changes being done.
They were aware that there was a moratorium in place for those applications, and that it was, you know, there was a six-month window of that, for that...
So, there was many ways that people could find out this was going on.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any? Okay. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Or if any, any comments from the council right now?
Both maps and texts. Madam President, I move that we accept the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Town zoning map and zoning ordinance as present, as recommended by the planning board and as described in item 7L.
Including the text amendments.
Including the text amendments.
Do I have a second? Jay seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Now I have to go back.
To Jay.
To Jay.
He thinks you're talking about him.
And Mike?
Yes, so having received the recommendation of the planning board after a public hearing, town council needs to consider the amendments to the comprehensive plan, text amendments and the map amendments that set forth in the agenda on item J.
So, we need a motion to...
And as amended by, as amended by the planning board, include the language that was amended by the chairman and adopted by the planning board, which basically says that the comprehensive plan amendments do not become official until they're officially accepted by the state planning office.
So, we need a motion to...
State, right.
We don't even have to say that. We're just going to...
Right. I'm trying to explain it, I'm sorry. A little late, but yes, that's, as amended.
So, the motion is to approve the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan and Future Land Use Map.
As amended by the planning board.
As amended by the planning board.
And consistent with the recommendations. And consistent with the recommendations.
Oh, inconsistent with the recommendations, okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Now, we're all going to get sued.
DPDW Director Rogers, discussion impossible vote to approve budget transfers. $4,800 from account 5440-5101, DPW maintenance worker, to account 5540-6652, shop equipment. $4,400 from account 5440-5101, DPW maintenance worker, to account 8840-6765, rec area repairs.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the budget transfers as outlined in item 8A.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Fire Chief Bailey, but the deputy chief is here tonight, discussion impossible vote to approve budget transfers. $5,000 from account 3310-6443, equipment service contract, to account 3310-7530, software maintenance. $5,000 from account 3310-6922, education allowance, to account 3310-7530, soft, software maintenance. $13,000 from account 3310-7611, fuel oil tires, to account 3310-7530, software maintenance. Entertained a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the budget transfers as outlined in item 8B.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? All right. Discussion impossible vote to approve subscription to first-do software to replace standalone computer programs with an integrated system. You, Josh, you want to explain it a little bit?
Yes, right now, we have multiple systems in the town, in the fire department, for scheduling, for EMS reporting, fire reporting. This, they're all standalone systems, they all don't work together. We're looking to switch to a system that is integrated, it's cloud-based, everything's stored in the cloud, it's accessible through your phone, your iPad, anything like that. Everything will be integrated, be in one system, and then it'll also give us capabilities in the department that we don't have currently, like pre-planning, like, pre-planning larger buildings. We have stuff, but it's in our IMC software, so when we go to the call, it's in the station computer on the server, locked in that, and we don't have access to it. Whereas with this system, we would be able to, on an iPad, on a cell phone, be able to have that information with us on scene. So, it's, it's replacing a bunch of systems, but it's also giving us more capabilities than we already have.
And this is a single source?
It is a single source, yes.
Did you say, did you say a cost to this?
What was that?
The cost of this?
The cost would be...
I believe, I don't have the quote in front of me, but I believe the cost, I believe the cost for the first year is $26,000.
Yeah, the cost, yeah.
And then after that is $23,000 because there's a $3,300 setup fee one time, be the first year.
Any questions from the council?
But this is also replacing, like, four or five different systems, which is saving us money on that end, so it's not actually the full cost, so...
I just have one. Josh, so, if we ever got to the point where you were able to identify any property in town and what hazardous items were there, a dog, kids, a cat, would, would you be able to integrate that into this program?
So, actually, one of, one of the portions of this software is called, a thing called Community Connect. It allows the community of, we'll advertise it on the fire department's Facebook page and social media, the town website, all that stuff. It actually allows homeowners to make an account and put in there if they have pets, if they have disabled family members, if they have key codes, key boxes, things like that, they can, you know, enter that information. It's on the system, it'll be there. When we go on EMS calls, any information that we see that we need to can be added into the system for future, for future calls, such as, you know, fire calls or EMS in the...
But when you got to a scene, the on-scene commander would be able to look at that and say...
Yeah, it'll also be accessible to, it'll be accessible to every guy on scene, not just the who's in charge, so...
Very good.
Move that we approve? Move that we approve the subscription to first-do software to replace the standalone computer programs with an integrated system for the fire department.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
I don't have to go into executive session for, for this item. We, Tim, Jay, myself, and the police chief and deputy chief met with the union on Wednesday, we have, with the police union on Wednesday, we have come to a tentative agreement, we're just waiting for the two lawyers to write it up. It will come to us for approval, and they're going to their bargaining unit also for approval. So, I should have something by our next meeting. And it'll be effective July, well...
Retroactive.
Retroactive to July 1st if, if it all comes. It was a very good negotiation, and I think it ended up very well. All right, I entertain a motion.
So, moved to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?